I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for Monday, July 15th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Okay, we have a number of people obviously signed up for citizens input. We're going to ask you with all respect to please keep your comments to three minutes, and we have a request for someone to go first. Kay Hebert, Cherry Street, Fall River.
Good evening, members of the Fall River School Committee, staff of the Fall River School District, and families. My name is Kaylin, and I'm a special education preschool teacher at the Early Learning Center. Tonight, I want to speak to you not just as an educator, but as a parent and a dedicated member of this community. Every day, I walk into my classroom fueled by a deep passion for providing a nurturing environment where all my students can blossom. It's a challenging job, to say the least, but seeing those three-year-olds grow and learn is the most rewarding feeling that makes the challenging days worth it. However, this passion is overshadowed by a harsh reality. As a single mom of three, I'm currently relying on food stamps and PACE vouchers to make ends meet. Even with a master's degree and moderate disability, the current teacher salaries of the Fall River Districts makes affording basic necessities incredibly difficult. Let me be clear, I'm not ashamed to use these programs. They're essential support systems that allow me to be here for my students, and if I did not get them, I would not be able to continue my job as an educator in the Fall River School District. The truth is, the current salary structure makes it fully impossible to invest in my classroom. The hashtag #ShowUpFallRiver campaign emphasizes the importance of educators being present for our students, but how can we truly show up for them if we're struggling to show up for ourselves and for our own families? Look, the countless emails... The countless emails urging educators to hashtag #ShowUpFallRiver are powerful, but tonight, I urge you, the school committee, to the stability... oh, sorry, to show up for us. Hashtag, right? Invest in your teachers. Invest in your teachers. Invest in the stability they need to create enriching learning environments. There isn't... this isn't just about salaries. It's about investing in the futures of Fall River's children. Some of you may know my kids as their students of Green. My son, Brooklyn, has autism, and school has been a journey, to say the least, and we are only entering second grade. His progress is a testament to the incredible educators of this district who poured their hearts into his education. They are the angels who took the time and the patience that he needed. We need you to be the angels for all of our students so the students of Fall River can have the education that they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Next is Kristen Anderson, Ruben Street, Fall River.
She sent hers in there. I'm reading first.
Ms. Cabral will read hers.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Anderson, and I am a product of the Fall River Public Schools, class of 2024. In kindergarten, I knew I wanted to become a teacher because of Mrs. Maderas, who I had at Tansy. I come from a family of educators, my mother, two of my aunts, my uncle, and my grandmother, which also has led me to the decision to become an educator. In high school, I decided to go to college to become a high school English teacher because of the amazing teachers I had at Durfee. Currently, I am entering my second year at Fitchburg State University, majoring in English with a minor in secondary education. When I graduate, my plan was always to return to Fall River and apply for a teaching position. Durfee High School's former principal, Matt DiMaris, once said that our goal... the goal for us when we graduate from higher education is for us to come back to Fall River. He said this at our first senior event, my senior year, and it was... and it has stuck with me ever since. When I come back to teach, I want to make sure my salary is a livable income. In Fall River, the cost of living is $98,224, and first-year teachers make a mere $48,089. And at the highest step, with a master's degree, it's $84,126. How can our educators live on these wages? Why should highly skilled professional teachers with master's degrees have to work second and third jobs to live? Most of you are educators, and you understand that the cost of living has risen, and there's inflation on top of that. If you were in these teachers' shoes, you should feel the pressure. You, as the school committee, have the ability to raise the teaching salary. You have a chance to help these teachers and make Fall River a place with competitive wages, a place people want to come back to, a place where people can afford to come back to. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is from Free Town. I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Kate Massoud, Chipaway Road, Free Town.
Hey. Good evening. My name is Kate Massoud. I'm a former Fall River Public School student and currently a chemistry teacher here at Durfee High School. I'm here to talk about teacher autonomy. During my seven years at Durfee as an educator, there's been a lot of changes, some good and some bad. However, very few have been as devastating to student success as the change to our science curriculum. A little over three years ago, our district adopted a high-quality instructional science curriculum called Open Sci Ed, OSE for short. Once adopted, this curriculum was met with almost immediate hesitation by teachers with good cause. The curriculum does not cover Massachusetts state standards. For instance, there are 14 Massachusetts state standards that chemistry teachers must cover. According to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, OSE covers four of those standards and only partially addresses five more. Even if we consider these partially addressed standards as fully capable of teaching our students, which they are not, OSE only addresses 64% of Massachusetts chemistry standards. If a student gets a 64 in a class, that's a failing mark. Yet, the district has decided that this curriculum is high-quality and what students in Fall River need. As you can probably tell, I strongly disagree with the district. But it's not just me that disagrees with this curriculum. In my experience teaching this curriculum, my students have never been more disengaged. This disengagement in our science curriculum can be seen in the decline in our recent MCAS scores. According to the Department of Education, in 2022 and '23, an average of 27% of Durfee students failed the Science MCAS, whereas prior to OSE and the suspended testing years due to COVID, only around 12.5% of Durfee students failed the Science MCAS in 2018 and '19. This is an increase of 14.5%, meaning around 15% of students might not get a high school diploma because OSE is a failing curriculum that the district is forcing us to teach. With that being said, we aren't fighting for teacher autonomy because we're trying to indoctrinate our students or refusing to adopt and adapt new teaching styles. We are fighting for teacher autonomy because we are educated professionals who know how to teach Fall River students the right material they need to succeed. If we continue down this path, our students will continue to suffer. Thank you.
The next speaker is from Taunton. I'll entertain a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Garrett Boone, Orchard Street, Taunton.
Hello. Good evening, members of the Fall River School Committee, citizens of Fall River, and employees of the Fall River Public School System. My name is Garrett Boone. I've been a science teacher at Durfee High School for 10 years. I speak today in response to the reduction of prep time and additional time commitments proposed by the school committee in last week's bargaining meeting to demonstrate just what is included in some of our prep time. In the past four years, I have not had a consistent curriculum for my English language learner students. This means I need to use my preps to read the approved curriculum, understand how to implement it properly, and find where it needs additional structures to match our state standards, all before I can then implement appropriate accommodations for our English learners. Every reading or text needs to be appropriate for students' current English reading level, and questions need to be appropriately scaffolded for their writing levels. To do this well requires a large investment of time, and that's just to make these materials accessible. Hours are also spent looking at data from class assignments, tests, as well as the two mandatory formative assessments given each week. This data needs to be processed to see where students are excelling as well as struggling so that we can determine next steps in helping them succeed. Preps also involve checking in with other teachers, Saks, guidance counselors, and vice principals to monitor and implement interventions for students' social-emotional learning and responding to IEP update requests in a timely manner. This leaves little time for other responsibilities such as grading, making copies, reaching out to parents, and so many others. This means that myself and other teachers need to spend time outside of the school day in order to give our students the best chances at success. Personally, I stay after school daily to work on these things. Additionally, I wake up early on weekends to get these things done before my daughter wakes up, only stopping once she tells me, "Daddy, it's playtime, not worktime," and she slams my laptop shut. This level of work is not sustainable and will only become worse with less prep time and more responsibilities. I implore you, consider bringing all school levels up in prep time as opposed to down for equity between schools. Thank you.
The next speaker is from New Bedford. I'll entertain a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Jenna Viera, Sterling Street, New Bedford.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Viera, and I am a special education team chair at Durfee High School. I am also the special education representative on the FREA bargaining team. Tonight, I am here to speak to the importance and urgency of a pay adjustment for Fall River educators. There have been several phrases repeated at the bargaining table when discussing financial proposals that I would like to share with the committee. First is the idea that the school committee would like to reward our teachers the best we can. The idea that what the FREA is asking for is a reward is dangerous rhetoric and an affront to the professional qualifications we hold, which includes advanced graduate degrees. The second phrase that has been shared repeatedly is that there is a finite amount of money available and that all sides need to deal with it. It is a widely understood concept that money doesn't grow on trees. However, the underlying implication of this statement is that the FREA should be grateful that an offer as high as 533 was made to us, when in reality, this offer comes with a cost: extra time after school, more minutes in the workday, and less prep time for teachers. When you factor in these conditions, 533 isn't much of an adjustment at all. Furthermore... Furthermore, on the agenda for tonight's meeting, there is an item to discuss and approve another administrative position. The district has implied that the current offer to the FREA is the way in which the district will avoid layoffs, but there are currently over 200 open positions on the district website. A pay adjustment at the expense of cutting positions should come second to a more alarming fact, that we can't fill the positions we have open. A pay adjustment is an enticing tool to recruit and retain quality educators. The bottom line is that school districts fund what they value. The Fall River School Committee has the ability to prove to the community that this district values retaining highly qualified educators and support staff who can continue to build on the great work happening here. Thank you.
Next up is Kristen Russel, Norwood Street, Fall River.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Fall River educators, and guests. My name is Kristen Russel, and I'm a 20-year veteran of the Fall River Public Schools. I teach at the Laterno School in Fall River, and I'm an FREA member. I'm here tonight to speak about the disparity in pay between Fall River and neighboring cities for veteran teachers. Over half of the FREA membership has been teaching in Fall River for more than 12 years. We do that because we love our students. We stay because we are dedicated to their success. Over the past 10 years, the FREA negotiated what they believed were fair contracts, putting our students first rather than our own personal needs. Now, it is time to correct the pay discrepancies and pay our professionals what they deserve. Why is it that teachers in neighboring cities with similar demographics are compensated at a much higher rate than our Fall River teachers? On average, teachers with a bachelor's degree in New Bedford are paid $4,000 more; in Brockton, $9,000 more; and Taunton, $11,000 more. On average, teachers with a master's degree... and may I say, I'm old enough to be grandfathered in, but after 28 years, got my master's degree. Teachers in New Bedford are paid $7,000 more than me; in Taunton, $9,000; and in Brockton, $20,000. The longer a teacher stays in Fall River, the wider the gap between our pay scale and neighboring cities increases. It's not fair. Keeping teachers here in Fall River makes a difference for our students and their families. Family-school partnerships provide a connection between the two most influential contexts in which children's learning and development occurs. Statistics show that the high cost of teacher turnover negatively impacts the district, including reduced educational quality and decreased morale among teachers, students, and families. Longevity does not reward our most dedicated and knowledgeable teachers, who should be utilized to build capacity within their buildings. These are the professionals who can build capacity among our new teachers in this district as their mentors and teacher leads. They need to be appreciated, respected, and used to better our students. These are the professionals who can offer our students so much more with their experiences. Now is the time to show them that they are valued. Now that we all know better, we expect you to do better.
The next speaker is from Westport, so I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Motion to waive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next up is Allison Maderas, Gifford Road, Westport. Three minutes, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Maderas. I'm a second-grade teacher at Laterno Elementary School. Through my last six years of service to the Fall River Public Schools, both as an educator and an undergraduate and volunteer, I have shown to be dedicated and committed to fulfilling the needs of my students as best as I can, both inside and outside the classroom. I partake in three committees, all outside of the contractual day, one of those being the Health and Safety Committee that was formed just this year with the collaboration of FREA and MGA. I am here today to discuss my personal health and to ask for updates regarding not only Laterno School, but the entire FRPS community. The morning of Friday, March 8, 2024, I should have been getting ready to safely walk Laterno School scholars to the school building, as I am a walking school bus monitor. I should have been getting ready to teach my 27, 7, and 8-year-old students, but that was not the case. I instead placed a sick day through the frontline platform. Back to Thursday, March 7, 2024, I was in my classroom having a meeting with our Hillford Literacy Coach when maintenance entered my classroom to swap out the filters on the two wall AC heat units. Immediately after this was done, my eyes began to itch, and very soon after, I began experiencing discharge. During my lunch break, I paid the school nurse a visit, and she took a look. She suggested it looked like conjunctivitis, or what most would call pink eye. I contacted my doctor immediately and requested a prescription. I continued to fulfill my role as a second-grade teacher for the remainder of the day, even with the discomfort. I documented the progress of my eyes for the next several hours. It continued to worsen. The following day, I woke up, and my eyes were not only swollen shut, but they were crusted in the discharge. I could not see. Luckily, as I cannot afford a house of my own, I live with my mother. She also called out of work and drove me to the emergency room. After several hours on a high dosage of steroids, my eyes began to settle. However, they did not go back to normal for another two weeks. It was not conjunctivitis. It was a severe allergic reaction to the airborne allergens that were released during this filter swap. I am thankful to HR, who gave me my sick day back. However, this should have never happened, and it continues to happen every day I walk into the school building. I see my primary care doctor and my allergen doctor. They continue to influence me to look elsewhere, as these conditions in our school buildings are not improving. Not only that, but I now use an inhaler for the asthma I was diagnosed with this year. We need to take better care of our school building. It is not only a faulty investment on our taxpayer dollars, but to let these buildings go to waste, but it's unethical to allow children to enter these conditions daily. Mold... Mold is not the only problem in our school buildings. It is routine maintenance and custodial needs our buildings demand, but our staffing cannot fulfill. I stand before you now requesting updates regarding the findings of the comprehensive assessments done at both Laterno and Green, as well as the plan moving forward for all Fall River Public Schools to ensure our students have a clean building to learn in. Thank you.
I guess it's Fall River. Next up, Alexander Souza, Blaisdale Ave. Alexander Souza? Three minutes tonight, please, Al.
All right, I'll keep it that...
Thank you.
...this time. Hey, guys. You're all doing well. Last time I was here, we had just been asked to accept a raise of about 2% at the half-year mark, three years in a row, which effectively is like 1%. So relative to inflation, it's actually like a 1% pay cut, 2% pay cut. We were told that this was a response to the offer we had initially proposed. That is to say, it was so ridiculous to ask for 12% for three years in a row, and therefore a pay cut was appropriate. They have since come up to 533, and we've come down to around 101010. And I'm asking everyone here to listen to what I'm about to say and decide which one of those sounds more reasonable to you. Last time I spoke, there were 200 open positions at the Fall River Public School website, and as we just heard, those haven't moved, so the billboards didn't work. It's... there are actually 226 right now, and about half of those are teachers. So Fall River has about a 15 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. So that's 1,500 kids. There's 750 seats in this room. So look at all of these seats, double them. That's how many kids are getting an inadequate education, right? 40% of those students are special ed, so the special ed kids alone could pretty much fill all the seats here. After our first bargaining session, the city put out a graphic on social media to try and frame the counteroffer as an attempt to avoid cutting positions. I was happy to see that most people didn't buy it. It seems to me that our voters are sick of having their tax dollars not really get put to work very well. Since I last spoke here, I've gotten a few offers, like I do basically every summer. One of them was for 5K more to teach in Lincoln, Rhode Island, which is five minutes from my house. The other was for 10K more to teach in Easton, which is 20 minutes from my house. For the record, that's a 7% raise and a 15% raise on my current salary. Oh, but I keep hearing Fall River can't afford it, right? That's what we all hear. New Bedford pays more, Brockton pays more, Chelsea pays more, Holyoke, Taunton, Lawrence, Central Falls, Pawtucket, East Providence, all of them have a lower per capita GDP. They're all about the same or lower than Fall River, all right? This correction is long overdue. We're like a decade behind, right? So I want you guys to consider, which of them seems more reasonable? After inflation, the city wants to give us about a 1% raise per year. That's 5%, 3%, 3%. And what we're proposing is a 20% correction over those same three years. Which of those options do you think will get 1,500 kids the teachers they need? I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out that this speaking here is not easy, even though I get like fired up. It's really awkward. I'm being recorded, right? It is so much easier to leave. It's so much easier to drive five minutes instead of 45 and get $10,000 more. But we all are here because we want to be. Let us put this school first and not have to compromise with our families. Please, we're begging you.
Next up is Jennifer Rizendes, Cecilia Street, Fall River.
I also have a few other students out there, too, that graduated me. Hi, I am here to represent the veteran teachers. My name is Jennifer Rizendes. I've been in Fall River teaching middle school math since 2006. For the teachers who have been here in Fall River for even half of that time, we know how much the Fall River students' behaviors have changed, for the worse, unfortunately. Cell phones, social media, lack of parental support. Then came 2020, COVID. It was terrible. Some parents believe students do not need to come to school because school was remotely taught temporarily. Well, can't my child just make up their work at home? That's chronic absenteeism. TikTok challenges tell kids to destroy school property. Snapchat allegedly deletes any texts of a bullying nature. Instagram promotes poor-body images. Each and every year, it gets more and more challenging to teach. Positions get added for SEL. They remain open. Teachers leave for better pay. Those positions stay open. Students with IEPs are unsupported because there's no special educator. We love our students. We absolutely do. Other speakers before me spoke of several districts. I'm just going to compare to New Bedford. Myself, I'm master's plus 15. In 2024, this past year, I made $84,690. I could have gone to New Bedford and made $94,766. $10,000. Even if you give me that 5% next year, I'm at 88,924. Still 6% below New Bedford. If you actually wanted me to compete with New Bedford, you'd have to give me a 13% raise, and that's just to equally not be above it. We ask for compensation to set up our rooms 10 hours maximum. We all know it takes longer. You said no. You asked us to work for an extra hour every week for free, for free. Why? Because you've always done it for free. No more. No more. We want to be paid what we're worth. We have heard many, many, many times that we signed those previous contracts. Well, this time, we're not going to. If the other departments in Fall River can get pay increases, such as the police and the firefighters, so can we. We top them. We don't want more than the other urban districts. We just want what's fair. We don't want a raise. We just want a correction. Thank you.
Next speaker, I'll need a motion. Warwick, Rhode Island. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to waive.
Second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next up is Helen Schoonmaker, Schoonmaker, from Marjory Lane, Warwick.
Thank you for the attempt at the schoonmaker.
Sorry.
Good afternoon.
My name is Helen and I'm currently a foundational ESL teacher at CUS and I taught mainstream ESL at Henry Lord for eight years. ESL is my lifeblood. I am the child of an immigrant. I was a multilingual learner myself from kindergarten through second grade. I grew up speaking English and Spanish, double majored in French and have easily picked up Portuguese on my own for my students. When people ask me why I became an ESL teacher, my response is this. My students' families dreamed of a better life for their children, which includes their education, and I have the honor and privilege to be part of that better life. But how can I truly provide the education they dream of when I am stretched thin? How could I when I was servicing two grades in two contents across both foundational and mainstream? How could I when I wore myself out modifying entire novels for foundational students sitting in mainstream classrooms? How could I provide that education they hope for when I had 77 students on my roster across five grade levels for pullout services? How could I when each of the 77 needed 45 minutes per day, but they were lucky they got 30 minutes a couple of times a week? How can I now in a foundational room when a well thought out rotation for blended learning has to be reworked because my instructional para gets pulled for coverage and I had planned for him to run station? In talking to other ESL teachers, this is the collective experience. Foundational teachers' paras are pulled for coverage, sometimes for weeks at a time, because we lose teachers to districts with higher pay. Many mainstream teachers service multiple grade levels with ridiculous caseloads because there aren't enough ESL teachers, because they leave for better pay, or we are told it's just not in the budget to open another position. And yet, year after year, we're told that the needs of our lowest 25% are the most urgent and we need to push them. How can we when we always have multiple ESL positions open across the district? We are told to meet students where they are, to meet their needs because it affects their performance. But educators are human too. The worries and anxieties of life, our families, our bills, our health affect us just like they affect our students. Meet us where we are. Address our needs. Pay us what we are worth so we don't have so many open positions so we can meet the needs of our special populations. So we can give the parents of my students and others like them the education they deserve and dream of. And so we can do our jobs without worrying if we'll be able to pay the next bill. Our students deserve teachers that stay because they are paid what they are worth. Our students deserve so much more than what Fall River is giving them. They deserve the life and education their parents dream of and you are not giving it to them. Thank you.
Next up is Dawn Gomes, Alden Street, Fall River.
Mayor Kugan and members of the school committee. My name is Dawn Gomes and I currently serve as a para educator at Laterno Elementary School. It deeply concerns me to witness a committee of city leaders chosen by residents to represent our Fall River School District engaging in such disrespectful and belittling behaviors towards each other. Instead of fostering collaboration and addressing health and safety concerns. Yes, I agree that there's been unnecessary funding on items like the mural and the Lexi dinosaur, while crucial budget resources for students' needs and supplies remain insufficient. I advocate for addressing the health issues and contracts for Fall River's teachers and para educators. What our city schools truly need is respect, recognition and fair compensation for our hard work and dedication, especially considering the current staffing shortages. It is disheartening to see funds misdirected towards non-essential items when educators often spend significant personal funds on their own classroom supplies. Furthermore, I was deeply disappointed by the recent school committee where citizens' concerns were completely disregarded and brushed aside. The neglect of the mold issue at Laterno, as well as several other campuses. What purpose does it serve to allocate three minutes to citizens and most committee members are unwilling to engage or address these concerns? As a resident of Fall River, I am embarrassed by the disrespectful and dismissive behavior that was displayed. If you are unwilling to advocate for Fall River's schools, staff and students, perhaps it's time that you consider your position. My intention is not to insult any of you, but it's just to state the facts. Mayor Kugan, you have spoken in the past meetings about making positive impact on students' lives. In 1995, I was that at-risk student and you were my advocate. You believed in me when I didn't believe in myself. Where is that, Mr. Kugan? Your dedication is, it positively not only helped me graduate, but it also inspired me to pursue a bachelor's degree in early education. This generation needs the 1995 Mr. Kugan more now than ever. Today, 29 years later, I continue to strive every day to support, nurture and positively impact the lives of all the students that I educate, both academically as well as emotionally. Thank you.
The next one, I'm gonna need a motion in a second on someone from Providence.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Shelby Richardson, Spruce Street, Providence.
Thank you, guys. Good afternoon. My name is Shelby Richardson. For the last four years, I have been a self-contained special education teacher at Henry Lord and I will be continuing my career in Fall River at Durfee this fall. I am here today to speak to my own experience, but ultimately to urge our school committee to take a hard look at the decisions being made regarding our teacher contract. In addition to my own career in Fall River, my wife is also an employee of the district. She works as a para professional at Henry Lord as well. Within my first three years at Henry Lord, I went from the new hire to the most senior teacher in my department due to the level of turnover we experience in our severe and profound programs. The work we do with our most vulnerable and highest need students is challenging, incredibly specialized, and most importantly, the most rewarding career of my life. My wife and I make that dreaded commute over the Washington Bridge in Providence every day because we love our jobs. And so I stand here and I am frustrated and I have grievances because of the fact that I want to be able to afford to do the work I am passionate about. If I was to leave right now and be hired by Providence Public Schools, I would have an immediate 7.5% salary increase. In New Bedford, 6%. Secoq, 10%. Boston Public Schools, 63% salary increase. And yes, I checked the math on that. These salary discrepancies are the reason we cannot retain staff, especially in hard to fill positions. Of the approximately 105 open teaching positions posted right now in this district, 40% of them are special ed teachers and 40% of those postings are self-contained teachers specifically. We cannot continue to have our highest need students without licensed and quality educators. And we continue to talk about retention, but the reality is, research proves that over half of employees' reasoning for leaving a job is money. Next year, I will be a step seven teacher with a master's degree in 30 credits. My spouse is a step six para, which means she's literally capped out on her salary without a change to the contract. Between the two of us, we have four degrees and 16 years of experience working with students. And the reality is, I'm not sure I can financially afford for us to work in this district anymore. There are months that I am left buying groceries and gas on my credit card because after I pay our bills, there's nothing left in our checking accounts. The idea of leaving my job and the students I service breaks my heart, but it very well could become a reality for both of us and many, many educators in this district if this school committee does not find a way to prioritize salaries and prioritize respect for the educators in this district. We deserve better. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second on someone from Dartmouth.
Motion to waive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Lola Grandella, Alpha Street, Dartmouth.
It's a lot easier back there. Good afternoon. My name is Lola Grandella and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Fonsoka Elementary. I have been a teacher for a total of 17 years, with the last seven being at Fonsoka. First, let's acknowledge the importance of our work as teachers. We make all other careers possible. We shape the future by preparing our students to become informed, responsible citizens. We spend countless hours planning lessons, grading papers and providing emotional support. Our impact extends far beyond the classroom, influencing the lives of our students and the well-being of our communities. We understand this. It is why many of us force ourselves to work well beyond our contractual limits, often at our own financial expense and at the expense of personal family time. Several years ago, I overheard a conversation between two of my three children, wondering why I had to spend so much time preparing for my students and no time with them. I will never forget that. All of us in this room have similar stories. The reality of our compensation does not reflect the value of our contributions. But even more importantly, inadequate pay leads to high turnover rates, which disrupts the continuity of education and negatively impacts student performance. When teachers are forced to take second jobs or leave the profession altogether, our students suffer the consequences. Consequences such as increased class sizes that make our students feel invisible. Consequences such as a decrease in academic performance that hinder our students' future possibilities. Consequences such as reduced course offerings that limit students' educational opportunities. It would be disappointing to think that the school committee doesn't recognize these serious consequences and their devastating impact on our students. It would be disappointing to think that the school committee doesn't take their teacher shortage seriously. No, I didn't say it. Recruitment fairs and billboards will not encourage teachers to teach in our district for well below their market value. And a salary offer that tells us that we have less value today than five years ago will not encourage good teachers to stay. Fair compensation is not about paying teachers what they deserve. It's about investing in our future. Thank you.
Next up, Brienne Como, Stewart Street, Fall River.
Hi. Good afternoon, Superintendent Kugan. I'm the superintendent currently, Mayor Kugan and school committee members. My name is Brienne Como. I am a former Durfee graduate, class of 98, FRE member and currently a special education teacher at Durfee going into my third year. Prior to this, I was a substitute teacher for 10 years for the district, where I worked as a long-term sub in various positions, specifically science department, where I am now a special ed science teacher. And over the past few years, I not only obtained my master's degree in education because I was influenced by people like you, Mayor Kugan, and many others that are in the audience here to become a teacher. Got my master's degree in education and just added on special ed because I love those students. They are my heart and soul and keep me motivated. That said, I show up every morning very early. My students know this. If they want to come talk to me or need extra help before or after school, I'm here every day. I'm here every day late. And my senior son, who's at home right now, he's like, Mom, why do you work so late? I said, I know, I'm sorry, but I have to do things that I want to get home to, which is you. But I have things at work that I have to prepare for and I don't have time to prepare for that while I'm working. I not only co-teach, but I also have my own classes. Sorry, it went away. Prior to writing lesson plans and writing IEPs and working on modifying my assignments for my students, I have also done this all while the support of living with my parents. I can, I do this not out of spite, but because I cannot afford a house of my own. I want nothing but to live on my own, but can't afford a place. I'm a single mother of a high school senior who wants nothing but the best for her son and the students that she teaches. And that deserves respect, a fair contract and fair pay. Thank you.
I need a motion in a second on the last speaker from East Providence.
Still moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Keith Michonne, Taiton Avenue, East Providence.
Good evening. I'm Keith Michonne, president of the Fall River Educators Association. We've been attending and speaking at these meetings for a few months now. We've had many bargaining sessions with your team and I hope you're beginning to understand the issues on the table. This is critical because we're losing good staff for bad reasons. The school department shared a bargaining update with the community last week. I think this is great that we're being transparent. After all, this is public education. Our constituents should be aware of the current state of our system and the steps that we are taking to address the issues. I know my members appreciate the transparency. What my members don't accept is the current position of the committee. Collective bargaining agreements and budgets go hand in hand. In these meetings, we hear people talk about bang for your buck, the juice for the squeeze. These are fun things to say. Everybody likes a deal. But when the employer is talking about their employees in this way, I have a hard time not thinking about exploited labor. Over the past four years, despite tough economic times, the school department has been in a great financial position due to the Student Opportunity Act that we fought hard for. This makes it even more infuriating to know that those years, we have not only failed to make progress towards competitive salaries, but we have fallen further behind. Additional positions to support students' academic, mental health and behavioral needs are outstanding. Reopening a neighborhood school sounds great. The actual impact is yet to be determined, but generally speaking, we support those decisions. What we don't support is when those decisions sacrifice living and competitive wages. This extends beyond teachers and includes every employee in the district. As things are now, we have critical positions open because we can't recruit quality candidates. We've created a revolving door in many positions because we can't retain the great people we have. I believe we have arrived at this point with decisions made with good intentions. I have a lot of respect for the committee members, the administrators and the people that have held those roles before you. But it can't be ignored that corrections need to be made. I've heard many times from leadership in this district say, when you take care of the staff, they take care of the students. Let's do that.
I do, I do wanna, I do wanna say. I do wanna, I do wanna say something before everybody leaves. Just so you know, stay all night, whatever you're comfortable with. I saw some people leaving. I do want to make it all clear. I survived Dawn Gomes in 1995. Look at her. And I am so, I am so proud of her. When I go into the school and see her there, I know how far she's come and I'm really proud of all my students that are here tonight. But I do want to say something. I want to make a request tonight with all of you here, because we do have to get this done. Our next bargaining session isn't until August 14th. I don't know if you know that. We're willing to meet next week, the week after, two times a week, but you have to insist on your union. insist on your union, who I know wants to get this done as bad as we do, that we can move that bargaining date up and get back to the table ASAP. Is that okay with you guys?
Attorney, do we have to make a motion for that?
No.
No motion.
No motion?
No.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm telling you right now, we will be ready. You talk to your people, and we'll go next week, the week after, two times a week. Thank you, guys. Mr. Aguirre.
Just like the last meeting, we had heard some speakers that said, you know, made some accusations of some things, so I'd like to request that the superintendent respond to those to us directly on things such as the Open Psyed not being a quality program because we've been told otherwise in subcommittee meetings. We had an ELL teacher say that she's not giving the services to her children, so I'm concerned about compensatory services and the like. But as you go back and review it, please respond to us relative to some of those things. I would definitely appreciate it. And as far as the negotiations, I think, you know, I, for one, way back within the start of this, wanted to do collaborative bargaining because I'm not afraid to sit at the table, but I think that's, if you really want to get something done, I think that's what we need to do rather than have you people come here and then you can't even hear from us. So I'm, as one member, ready to sit at the table and do collaborative bargaining, which I've said right from the get-go. Aye-o.
Next, thank you. Next item up on the agenda is the recognition awards, number three. We don't have any tonight. And item number four is our subcommittee updates. We have an update from the Instructional Subcommittee. Mimi Larve, the chair.
Yep, the Instructional Subcommittee mayor met at four thirty on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Spencer Borden. Our Instructional Department directors presented updates on platform data usage and student outcomes, high dosage tutoring, ST Math Carnegie, I Ready, Grade One Ignite tutoring, six to eighth Amplify coaching, Lexia Core Five, the elementary, and Open Psyed. They also, they also presented curriculum and assessment materials on Lexia Middle School ESL Renew and Pilot, Elementary Newcomer Ignite Reading, Lexia Core Five, Goodheart Wilcox Health Curriculum, Ref Reps from the Health Department as a PE option at Derfi, ELD Assessment Materials, WIDA, and Last Links for Dual Language Education. Committee voted to refer all items to the full committee. The committee had a discussion and voted to refer the English Language Assessment Specialist, Revised Job Description, and the Partnership and Professional Development Review. Meeting adjourned at six fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up, item number five, is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Curly.
Thank you. I have three items on which to update our summer programming, mold issues, and a hiring update. So first, I'd just like to talk about the summer programming. I'm really proud to say that all of our schools are running a summer program. In total, we have about two thousand students who are enjoying summer programming in the Fall River Public Schools. Included in that, we're serving about sixteen hundred lunches in those programs and another eight hundred in the parks. We've got all different kinds of summer programs, including an MLL program at Henry Lord, enhancing language acquisition through real-world learning experiences, early childhood programming at twenty-five oh one South Main Street, where we've added an internship at our Twenty-First Century Learning Sites, where high schoolers are working as interns with the goal of developing career pathways in the educational field. This is a program that will actually continue into the school year. At our Derfi enrichment camp, we've got a wide range of enrichment activities, including culinary, woodworking, dance, art, cosmetology, and a whole lot more. There's a summer basketball program in the evening, skills and drills, as well as the summer league, and we've got ESY, middle and high school at Derfi, and elementary at Sylvia, and that's in addition to all of the school-based programs that we have across the district. I want to acknowledge our community partners in some of this programming, including the Watapa Rowing Club, the Mass Audubon Society, Fall River Sailing Program, Futsal, Citizens for Citizens, Family Service Association, Recreation, and Fall River Children's Museum. Across all of the programs, we've got a ton of field trips, including those to the Wang Center, Roger Williams Park Zoo, Boston Duck Tours, Mystic Aquarium, Boston Museum of Science, the Southwick Zoo, Tree Top Adventures, Fall River Children's Museum, and Battleship Cove. And just want, finally want to talk about the fact that on August second, all of our Twenty-First Century programs and some of our other programs are coming together for a second annual Field Day celebration at Derfi High School. We are still in the planning stages for that, but we know that it's taking on an Olympic theme at, and it has many different events for students of all ages. The next piece to the update is around summer school cleaning and mold remediation. Our summer cleaning projects, in addition to what we do traditionally, is focusing on thorough cleaning of school facilities and addressing mold issues caused by excess humidity. The aim is to ensure safe and healthy environments for students and staff by the start of the new school year. I'm going to highlight ongoing and planned work across three sites of interest, Green, Spencer Borden, and Laterno. The status of the Green School includes the following. We've conducted an assessment of the facility, identified areas with potential mold growth due to excess humidity. We've installed commercial-grade dehumidifiers in the areas of need, worked on equipment that has deficiencies, and started preparing for the installation of a new chiller in the late fall. In terms of cleaning and remediation, we're continuing the deep cleaning of classrooms, hallways, and common areas, removed items which appear to have been contaminated, and cleaned areas using industry standard remediation techniques. We're also dehumidifying affected areas to reduce moisture levels. In terms of testing and monitoring, all air quality tests have been conducted in affected areas. We've installed humidity monitors to track and manage moisture levels continuously in areas of concern, and will continue to follow instructions and recommendations of testing agencies, including the assessment from Environmental Health. Our next steps included in the ongoing remediation will be continued mold remediation in newly identified areas and to apply mold-resistant treatments to prevent future growth on the site. In terms of Spencer Borden, we've conducted an internal assessment of this facility, identified areas with potential mold growth due to excess humidity. We found these to be limited to the first floor east. We've installed commercial-grade humidifiers in the areas of need, and in preparation, we're preparing for the installation of a new chiller there in late fall. In the meantime, we're continuing to work on equipment with deficiencies as they're found. In terms of cleaning and remediation, we are completing a deep cleaning of classrooms, hallways, and common areas, removing items which appear to have been contaminated, and cleaning the, all of the areas using industry-standard remediation techniques. We also have dehumidifiers in the classrooms as needed to reduce moisture levels. Ongoing remediation there, one step that we know is, is one of our next steps, is going to be to replace damaged ceiling tiles in all identified areas. In terms of Laterno, which was the site where we started the work, we are still waiting on a report from Environmental Health. The report will provide a roadmap for us in terms of which items need to be accomplished as a yearly, on an annual basis at Laterno, and will be modified to fit each of our buildings. In terms of cleaning and remediation there, we're completing deep cleaning of classrooms, hallways, and common areas, removing items which appear to have been contaminated, and using the same industry-standard remediation techniques, dehumidifying affected areas to reduce moisture levels. Testing and monitoring at Laterno is a little bit more farther in the process in that we have conducted air quality tests in affected areas, and we continue to follow the instructions and recommendations of testing agencies, including assessments from Common Sense Environmental. We've installed humidity monitors there to track and manage moisture levels, and next steps include continued targeted mold remediation in newly identified areas and to apply mold-resistant treatments to prevent future growth. Across all of our sites, in terms of preventive measures, we are continuing with the installation of those additional humidifiers in critical areas that we know are prone to high humidity and implementing routine inspection and maintenance schedules to monitor and address mold issues promptly. In terms of final testing and validation, we are conducting random spot air quality and surface tests to ensure all issues have been effectively removed and preparing a detailed report summarizing findings and remediation actions. In terms of ongoing communication and training, we're putting together a plan to inform school staff and stakeholders about the remediation efforts and outcomes on an ongoing basis and providing training on recognizing mold issues and reporting procedures. The last piece is around hot, new hires. We have one hundred sixty-nine new hires between June eleventh through July fifteenth. Most of these will be, are people who are starting in August, included our three athletics positions, assistant coaches, one carpenter, two cluster coordinators, five counselors, two custodians part-time, three department heads, three directors, four instructional support liaisons, one nurse, twenty-one paraprofessionals, one principal, two psychologists, two safety officers, three speech-language pathologists, one hundred nine teachers, one technician, four vice principals, an early childhood education teacher, and an SEL liaisons. We've had twenty-six resignations from June eleventh to July fifteenth, and ten retirees during that same period.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Just a few follow-ups on the mold. Actually, I'm going to start with another issue regarding the summer program. Was the summer program at, there's a summer program at Stone, correct?
Yes.
Was that program moved by any chance?
The Stone Summer Program remains at Stone.
At Stone, okay. And moving on to Laterno, do you know?
I'm going to go outside. Just take this with you, please.
Scott, we can hear you. They all laughed at you.
Okay. An update on Laterno, has the remediation company that, the Environmental Health, have they gone, I know they've gone into the school, have they done extensive testing yet in the classrooms?
At Laterno, we are awaiting the results of some testing that we did a couple of weeks ago. We actually had two of our, two vendors, companies onsite, one that was brought in by the MTA, the other, it was one that we brought in. On that day, they actually tested the same air, the same surfaces, they exchanged testing results so that they could each bring tests back to their own labs, and we're awaiting the results of those reports.
And what was the company we brought in? I wasn't aware of this.
That's Common Sense. Common Sense.
Okay, and just, do you have like a timeline on when we're going to get a report back? Because I know it's been a few weeks now since they've done a report. Is there something that like takes like a couple of weeks, a month?
I didn't get a response from them as to the timing. We did, he did do some work there and did his own testing also besides the two other groups. He did two spot checks in two rooms, but I do not have a written report from him yet.
Okay, I think we can just get like a follow-up on that, see if we can get like a timeline of when we're going to get a report, because I'm assuming that's going to come with a plan on remediation so we can, you know, tackle this before the start of the school year?
Yes.
Aye-o, thank you.
Mr. Aguirre.
Just a few questions to follow up. So I'd like to get a copy of the contract with the consultant so that we know what they hired to do. I know what we as a committee decided to authorize, but we haven't seen a copy of the contract, so that's one thing. The mold, like I, Superintendent mentioned a few times, excess humidity, excess humidity, and I said this before, that I think the problem is our HVAC system is the issue. And I don't think our HVAC system is working properly. As I, Superintendent was gracious enough to meet me at one of the schools to talk about it. When we went through the building, it was confirmed, a lot of what the people came before us to say, that they reported things years ago and we didn't address it or whatever, you know. I think that at the end of the day, our HVAC systems are not working a hundred percent like they should. Now, granted, that's going to cost us money, but if I, as one member of the committee, do not see something come before us that says, this is not working and we need to spend two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever the amount is, I assume that all of our systems are working in the twenty twenty-four type of technology. Clearly, that's not happening in several of the buildings, and I think it's not a secret anymore. So I think one of the things I'd like to request is a, an update on every HVAC system in every single building, including, and I've already asked for the backup, but I haven't received it yet, but all of the tickets and all that stuff is coming in. But we need to get an assessment to say, what is wrong with our buildings? Because as we continue to go, and we're trying to dehumidify, and we got, we got little baby humidifiers, we've got some bigger ones, that's not the way to handle it. We need to handle it by fixing the HVAC systems, in my opinion. So we don't know because it doesn't get presented to us. So the excess humidity and, I just think the HVAC is one of the major issues that we still have. I'd also like to request that the consultant that we hired comes before us in this public meeting, the next meeting, and stands there so we can ask that consultant independent questions in the public about what is happening. And one of the questions I'm going to look for in the contract is the consultant that is the agreed-upon professional, are they going to have a sign-off on the safety of all of our schools before school starts? Not looking for an answer now, but I thought when we talked about having a consultant that was going to come in with their license and they were going to do an independent analysis, I'm of the belief that that person is going to sign off and say to all these teachers and staff and the students that this school is safe and free from mold. But I don't know that that's happening. The, the last thing on, on the mold was, Superintendent Curly, I think you said that there was monitors in all the schools, but when I went through the green with you, there wasn't monitors, so I don't know if that was referring to the Laterno, which was the first ones to start with. I'm assuming you meant that whatever the technical term of that monitor in each classroom is up and running, is that what you mean? And the other buildings, I'd never saw one thermostat monitor, so I don't know if that's a typo or correction.
It might be. I know that we are looking at the humid, getting the humidistats in, but I'm just looking back to see where I said that.
Sure, and you can.
There could have been a miscommunication.
You can follow up with this, so my concern is, I think, like everybody else's. If we said we're going to put a, is it called a humidistat? Is that the? Yes. If we're going to put a humidistat in every single classroom, then by tomorrow, we should get a list of every single classroom in those affected schools and how many humidistats are actually up and how many are not. I think that's something that we deserve to, not only for us to have, but the union and the other people should have the same thing. So we can't just keep talking because time is going by. And if we keep on talking about, well, we're going to do this, we might do that, we're going to do this, school's going to start and we're going to be in a mess. So I hope you understand what my concerns are, and I hope to continue to work with you on trying to get answers. Aye-o.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And just to concur with Mr. Aguirre, especially, specifically with Laterno, it probably is, and I know we're no experts in mold, obviously, but considering that this has been going on at least since December, we've been hearing about this, I don't think it has anything to really do with just the change in the weather. It has to be something internally with the school, so just to follow up on that. And then just one more question at school for the superintendent and yourself. Have you heard any concerns at either at Stone specifically about any air quality issue that's been brought to your attention?
I haven't heard anything from Stone. I'm sure Principal Shaw would have already contacted us. She's very conscientious. We are working in the building now. There's a lot of activity going on in the upper floors in that building, but I have not heard that.
Okay. Aye-o for now, thank you.
Thank you. Next item up, student comment, none tonight. Item number seven is the approval of minutes. We have a number of minutes. I'd like to bundle them up. If anybody has one they would like to pull or question about, let me know. If not, I'm going to be looking for the approval of the minutes of the Special Ed, Alternative Education, Early Childhood Subcommittee Meeting from three twenty-five, twenty-four. I'll be looking for the approval of the minutes from the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee Meeting from four one twenty-four. Approval of the minutes from the Technology Subcommittee from four four twenty-four. Approval of the minutes from the Regular School Committee Meeting from four eight twenty-four. I'd like to take them as a bundle. So moved.
Second with a question.
I have a second. Mr. Aguirre.
Are we within the timelines? I'm looking, these dates are very old. Are we, are we within the timelines that was supposed to be?
On the minutes?
Yeah, one is, like, the first one's dated three twenty-five, and it's now seven fifteen. Are we within the minutes of, are we, are we within the timeframe?
Is that one, is that one dated properly, Ms. Cabral?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, so it's probably.
As far as I know.
Okay.
So was that a yes or no?
Yes, she said yes.
It's within the timeline?
Yes. I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Obstand.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the approval. Item number eight is the approval of travel requests. We have one travel request. I'm looking for a motion, a second, for a group to go to Orlando for the National Association for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth Conference.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Roderick? I mean, sorry, Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of a donation. I need a motion, a second, before Superintendent Curly describes it.
So moved?
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Superintendent Curly, then we'll call the roll.
On-
Call the roll first. I'm sorry, Deb, go ahead.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent.
On behalf of Darby High School, Dr. Jessica Stevens accepts $10,000 donation from Bristol County Savings Bank. The donation will be used to support culture-building, SEL initiatives, and equity work at Darby High School.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the approval of grants. We have a number of them. If anybody wants to pull, let me know if they have an issue. I'm sorry?
First three, hold please.
The first three, okay. So it's Coordinated Family Community Engagement, 1, 8 Foundation, and Promoting Safe and Healthy. Any others? Can I get a motion, a second, on the last two?
Motion to approve Massachusetts and HQIM.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, could you call the roll on those two, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. First one is the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant, Mr. Aguirre.
So I'd like to just know, what, what is the impact of such a grant on the regularly budgeted pre-K early childhood?
That's you, Superintendent.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So, we're getting a grant here for $520,000. What would the impact be of this, getting this grant on our early childhood? So we've been asking questions in the past relative to the cost of pre-K and how much it costs per placement and all that stuff. Now, this is a grant, so what would happen if we didn't either get this grant or what are the options for what we could use this money for in the grant, is my general question? It's a lot of money and I'm appreciative of the grant, but what would the impact be on the budget if we didn't get this grant? Would we not be able to have a program?
So I think that this is, is part of the larger program, and if we take a look at the, at the budget pages, it looks like this is a, this pays for a project coordinator for this partnership, because I believe that this is connected to work that we do with community partners as well. And so there's a, a project coordinator, and then also, it looks like three teachers, educator instructors, stipends for staff participation in community events outside of work hours. So I don't know that it, I think this is, this becomes a piece of our, our larger offering around early childhood education.
And I assume the director's not here to answer that question?
No, she's not.
Does she work under Assistant Superintendent Maybe? Does that person have any, any idea? If you have no idea, then just, I'm not sure. I was referring to-
Dr. Brownhardt.
Oh, I was gonna say I think-
Anybody that has access.
I think to Dr. Curly's point, if I have an understanding a little bit, I do believe that this is a piece of the work that happens with all of the registration on the go and all of our community events, where we do have pre-K and early learning center staff that are in attendance at these events and make them possible so that we can be all over the community in the spring and in the fall, particularly in the spring and in the summer, getting our families connected to resources, as well as getting as many of our kindergarten students registered for planning purposes.
And why I, why I ask this is because when you're looking at the grant, we only approved the number, but we have to do a deep dive into what do, what do our pre-Ks look like and what are we doing with them? And we're spending $500,000, but I don't necessarily see how is this being leveraged within the confines of the entire program, such that if this exists, did not exist, some of the worthwhile things that you both just said are happening, how would they happen if it wasn't for this money? If that was the case and we need to fund budgeted positions, like two of these are office staff and professionals for $68,000, well, what do they do otherwise? Is that helping us with the budget? Or is these additional positions that work under the director that we don't necessarily know when we are told at a meeting that there's extra helps needed, I, you know, overwhelmed and all this stuff? So, the reason why I'm asking the questions is because it kind of flows with what we were told last month, was that we don't have enough staff as it is. Now I'm finding here, we've got $500,000 in a grant of staff, when I'm asking, what would happen if we didn't get this grant? Would we just not do these programs if they're worthy? And I think there's probably more to it that the director can probably give us a, some one-page around, but any time we're gonna spend $520,000 on a grant, it's my, in my opinion, as one member of the committee, we need to have the director here to be able to answer those questions at a school committee meeting. So I'm gonna vote yes, just because I think it's worthy, but it's definitely worthy of more discussion. Thank you. Ayo.
Anything further? Can I get a motion and a second on the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement?
Motion to accept Coordinated Family-
I have a motion?
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
What's it for? I couldn't hear.
Coordinator, Coordinating Family-
Oh, yeah.
Disconferences. Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next one that we have, a hold on, is 1, 8 Foundation Ignite Reading Grant. Mr. Aguirre.
So this is, I have a similar type of question on this that, obviously I can, I can read. It says it's for 300 seats in Ignite Reading. But what was the, what was the options for the grant? Was this a grant specifically for that only?
So, yes.
Only, or was it that we-
Nope.
Could have used it for something else? And if that's the case, what, I don't have, I was trying to look through it quick, but the actual licenses cost the entire amount, or is it?
So it is literally to pay Ignite Reading for 300 seats for grade one students in the district. And so we had a, we, we ran the program this year. This is high dosage literacy tutoring, tutoring in grade one, 300 students across the district. We had an opportunity to extend the grant into a second year, and we were choosing to do that, we applied for that grant. And then in addition to that, so that we could service students across schools, there's something later on the agenda where we, we'd like to fund an additional 100 seats locally. But I think the question is, is this, is this money specific to the seats? Yes.
And the 1, 8 Foundation required-
1, 8 Foundation is willing to pay for 300 seats. It wasn't an open grant where we could write for anything for early literacy, it was specific to a partnership with Ignite Reading.
And I don't have the minutes of the meeting and I didn't watch the instructional meeting, but I'm assuming that you had presented, you or whoever presented that, the data indicates that this has been successful, so it's not, I'm just assuming that, but I'm-
It does.
Not wrong in assuming that.
It does. And so we were, which is why we're looking to expand the programming to an additional 100 students. We, we have seen some marked improvements for students. I believe some of the data is, is included here. I know that we included it for the instructional subcommittee, but we saw increases in the number of students who were able to increase and kind of join their grade level peers, reading at grade level. It, we're seeing huge increases in terms of those DIBL scores from beginning to end of year.
So, if I could just ask that, that gets sent, the only thing that we have here is three pages of emails, so I do think it's, if we don't have any option to, to spend the money, I think it's, we don't have a choice, so.
Sure.
I think it's successful, but we don't have a choice on that 7/59.
The rationale for it, that's used for the additional 100 seats, is really the same as what we would, the rationale for wanting to participate in the grant program, but I could share that information now.
No, I'll keep looking as, as we go, but the one for this one didn't have it, so as we go, I'll probably find it. Thank you.
Motion to accept 1, 8 Foundation Ignite Reading Grant.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And promoting safe and healthy learning environments. Mr. Aguirre.
Did this go to the subcommittee too? I just wasn't sure.
I don't believe that it did.
Mr. Almeida.
So I know that Mr. Farius sent out this grant when he had applied for it, so this is the internship grant that's gonna go in conjunction with what's happening at the 21st Century Sites. So there'll, there are a total of 10 interns which will be interning all, all year, starting this summer through June.
Yeah, the only, it sounds like a, a good program, we just never heard anything of it. And as a practice that we've tried to implement was that all these grants would go to subcommittee to try to get vetted beforehand, and it sounds like they could justify it at that point. I don't know if it, is this time, is this time sensitive, or is this already happening?
Just, just in general, Ms. Aguirre, it's, it would be fine to move some grants forward to the subcommittee previously or prior to, but in a lot of cases, they're kind of, we're under the gun to take care of them, and the state kind of gives us a timeline and that's the timeline and that's when we gotta do it. But if it's something that we can plan ahead for and, you know, plan for properly, we can do that. That's not a problem.
So I, I haven't seen here, but I would probably be safe to say that somebody has to apply for a grant well below, before July 15th.
We, we applied for it, I believe it was in June is when it was applied for.
Right. So to me, at that point, is that we're gonna, so if we apply for a grant, the district, and the school committee doesn't want to apply for that grant, and you already applied for it and got the grant, we are basically just voting as a rubber stamp to say this is what we're doing. So all I'm asking is that as we go forward, we say, "We want to apply for a grant to do this." At that point, we schedule a subcommittee meeting, whatever one that would make sense at, and then we're all on the same page and say, "Yeah, that sounds good, that we're gonna apply for that grant." So when it comes in, it's sort of, we already had vetted it before, if you know what I'm saying. That's all. Many things as we go through these contracts are lousy timing, because it's July 15th and many of the things that are in here start July 1. And not many of, there's several of them that didn't go to subcommittee. So we're not gonna, we're not following the protocol, is all I'm saying. So, I'm gonna vote yes, but if in the future-
Point of information?
I yield, I yield.
Mr. Dias.
It's a quick point of information. What's the, just Mr. Aguirre's point, what's the timeline on the specific grant? Like when does it have to be approved by?
As soon as possible, essentially, because it's supposed to start this summer.
So there's no like deadline where we have to, you have to apply by, or is it like, you want, you want to use it for the summer?
The deadline was in June, that's when we applied for it, and we were awarded, you know, prior to, we got, we got awarded late June with the approval, and I'm bringing it forward to you today.
So the deadline to apply, but it's technically not in effect unless we approve it tonight?
Yep.
Can, can I just ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ayo, ayo.
I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
So I guess my understanding of the practice is that when we're applying for grants, that there's a form that we fill out to, to announce or share that we're applying for a grant. And then it's been the practice, I know in the Office of Instruction, that once we get an award letter for the grant, we basically send the same information out reminding you, "We applied for this grant and we received it." And we, in generally speaking, we haven't brought grants to subcommittee. I think sometimes if the timing is right, and it's a big grant, like we discussed Ignite Reading at the last one, but it's, it hasn't been our practice. And so I just want to be really clear about the expectation to do that.
Mr. Aguirre.
If that was the expectation.
That's right. That's, that's the practice right now.
The, the practice is that we, that we fill out the paperwork, but it's not that we go to-
Correct.
To subcommittee.
Mr. Aguirre.
So to my point, when did the school committee hear anything about this particular grant?
I believe it was sent, sent out in June, Ms. Aguirre.
No, the school committee?
I, I believe it was sent out in June, I believe, letting you know that we were applying for the grant, I believe.
In June?
Yes.
So if you could get copies of that. So, the point that I'm making is that we should know when that's happening. And then there's time in the middle to schedule a subcommittee to see whether it is. But it's a dangerous practice, as far as I'm concerned, of approving something, making it look like as if we 100% approve something before we even know what it, what it is. And in this case, I would want to know. If that went out, great. If not, show us the submission. When did the grant get applied for? And at that point, we would say, "Oh, it was June 20th, last minute, I don't know how you apply for a grant on June 20th to implement two weeks later, don't know how that works. We just heard from superintendent's report that this program's already in existence and we haven't even voted on it." Right? We just heard that today, that they're recruiting interns and all this stuff, which is part of this. We haven't even voted on it today, but it's in the superintendent's report at the beginning that says we're already implementing it. Just doesn't seem like it's backwards. Motion to approve, if not, if not made yet.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll on promoting safety and healthy.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Item number 11 is the approval of contracts. This... We would use a similar format. If anyone has any questions on any of the contracts, we can take them in sections or go through the new ones. We can do those first. On the new contracts, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of them. Any polls or discussion? Mr. Agia... I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Dias.
So, this is just on the new contracts?
Correct. Just the new section. There's five there. Mr. Dias.
That's where most of my questions lie, so I'm actually going to have... Please hold on Ignite, Lexia, and 2 out of the 3 WB Masons. The one for Stone School, and the one for what? Westall.
All right, so 2 of the WB Masons, the last 2, and Ignite and Lexia. So, the only one we're taking a motion to approve right now is the first one from WB Mason, furniture for RLM. Can I get a motion and a second on that one?
I'll approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on WB Mason. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, we'll go back to the top. Ignite Reading, Mr. Dias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was going to put a hold on Amplify, not Ignite, but that's a continuation, so I'll hold on that. So, I have no questions about Ignite, if we want to move to the next one.
All right, can I get a motion on that, then?
A motion made to approve.
I have a motion, a second, on Ignite.
On that?
Mr. Agia.
I just... As we were talking about going through the agenda, I don't see anything here relate to data, so just for the record.
Okay.
That says 100 seats, $2,500 per seat, $250,000. That's all I see.
Okay. I will reshare what we did at instructional segment.
Thank you.
You said, Mr. Agia?
Yes.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Dias, Lexia Learning.
Thank you. Just have a few different questions, 1 on the contract and 2 on the program itself. I know Superintendent, thank you again for responding to some of my questions, so I'm just going to follow up on them. Regarding the contract, going through it, there was some items in there which I had some questions on regarding the systems. So, we're approving to... Just for the public's edification, do we want to talk about the... What the 2 professional learning days, what that's going to consist?
So, this is specific to Lexia English?
Lexia Learning Systems.
Okay. Is Lisa here? Lisa Zacharala? I'm just going to ask her to speak to it, because she knows more about the specific professional development line item of the contract than I do.
So, the 2 professional learning days would be allocated... The first would be an onboarding for the teachers, so that they were 100% sure of how to use the program. The second one would happen later in the year, and that would be to have teachers, once some data is generated by the program, to allow them a chance to work with the company to fully understand the data of their students, since Lexia English is a new program for us.
Okay, thank you. And just so I don't get the... Too confused, the Lexia, this is separate from the Lexi English. That's... Because we have a few different Lexi Learning Systems in the budget, so if it's not pertaining to this exact item, just let me know, and I'll save my questions. Regarding the Lexia ICORF, I know we had a... Not intense, but we had a discussion about it in Subcommittee. More about the numbers from the last fiscal year to the prior, I have some concerns regarding it, because I feel like we didn't see much of an increase. I know we had a little bit of an increase in like... In like the 100, like, meaning like a good number, but we talked about like a slight dip in the students that met usage from year to year, 53% to 49%. Could you just give an explanation on like what met usage is? Like, usage meaning they just use the platform, or they met the basic standards for the program?
The met usage is a measure of whether or not students participated in the number of minutes on a weekly basis that is recommended by the company. So, there's a range that says, in order to, you know, make the expected progress, students have to participate for, you know, between 60 and 90 minutes a week, or, you know, 90 and 120 minutes a week, you know, and it differs by grade level.
Okay, and there was a slight dip from 2024 to previous fiscal year? Okay, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Dias, can I get a motion on Lexi Learn?
Motion made.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Agia.
So, basic, what I'm seeing on this is the... It's just the ELL equivalent of the regular Lexia. It's not... I'm not missing anything, right?
No.
And how much do we pay roughly? Is it relative to this, or is this more per student than... So, this says $14,000 for 7, I don't know, licenses? Whatever it is, unlimited licenses? Is that for a whole classroom? Or is that for 7 children?
I think that those are site licenses. Let me look at it. So, Mr. Agia, the 7 licenses that you're looking at, $14,000 for a site license, so 7 schools will be getting full site licenses, and then I believe you see 150 kind of random licenses. That's because Lexia English is for our students who are at beginning levels. That's what we're going to work on it with this year. And so, not every school has enough students at beginning levels to warrant a full site license. So, those additional... The 7 site licenses will go to the schools that have a large group of newcomer students, and then the other 150 licenses can be used ad hoc for any additional newcomer students throughout the district.
And it's the same program?
Lexia English is different from Lexia Power Up in that it's aligned to the WIDA, so it allows students to practice speaking skills and language development skills related to the WIDA standards.
I meant to this one. So, the 7 site licenses and the 150 individuals, is that the same program?
Same exact program, yes.
And 7 licenses can be for as many students as...
Yes, so there was a... An amount of site licenses where to do kids individually, it would become more costly at certain sites to buy individual licenses for kids than it would be to buy a site license.
And my last question is, if this is a program that's going to work, I'm assuming you're bringing it forward because you think it's going to work to help the children. If that's the case, how many children are not going to have access to this program?
All of our newcomer students will have access to the program.
How about the second one, the 150?
That would be for any newcomer students who are not sitting at a school that has enough children to warrant a site license. So, for example, Doran may get 1 or 2 newcomers who opt out of foundational programs, want to go to their neighborhood school, so we want them to have the option to have that license, even though they're at Doran and not attending a newcomer program at Talbot, Morton, or Cussin.
So, there's going to be nobody that's not serviced by this program?
All of the newcomer students, not our advanced students. Our transitional students are not going to be working on this program.
But they use the regular Lexia program?
They will have access to the Lexia Power Up, yes.
What if there's not 150? We pay for it anyway?
I believe that we do, but I'm not really concerned that we will not get to 150.
But you understand my point is?
I do, fully understand your point, yes, sir.
It's almost like we're going to be at a point where we're either going to have wasted licenses or not enough licenses. So, if you were telling me that we were going to be definitely... You're not going to have any problem filling this 150? That, to me, means that we're going to have more than 150 that aren't going to... Otherwise, it's a very difficult number to prove right now, because you don't know what you're going to get.
Correct.
I'm of the belief that if it's going to work for the kids, we should get as many as needed. I think that makes sense, so...
So, I think if we exceed 150, I'll be back before this committee asking for more licenses, for sure.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything further on Lexia? Can I get a motion, a second?
There is a motion.
There is a motion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next hold was on the WB Mason Furniture and Pictures, 2501 South Main. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And if I can, like, just ask the questions for both of them together, or do you prefer...
Whatever you want.
Okay. Just, I really don't... Didn't... I didn't see anything particularly wrong, but just for the public's edification at home, the reason... Because there are big price tags on these items, and in the contracts, I didn't think they were very itemized, to explain to my circumstance. Could you just explain, just maybe, if you want to start with Stone, then with Westall, what is being purchased with these 2 contracts?
Sure, so for Stone first, the furniture that currently is at the Westall School, that furniture's been moved already once from the original stone at 1207 Globe Street. So, the furniture's in rough shape, and it needed to be replaced. So, the quote for 2501 is for new furniture in the classrooms, teacher desks, chairs, conference tables, and file cabinets, bookshelves for 2501. So, it's a complete fit-out of that school for the first, 2nd, and 3rd floor. The second quote is for Westall, and it's exactly the same thing that I just mentioned. It's a complete fit-out for a little over 300 students and all of those ancillary pieces that go along with each classroom.
Okay. What I just didn't see in the contract was there was a cost for labor, but what... How much, like, out of the 296 and the 425?
Yep.
How much of that is labor cost?
So, there is... On both items, there's a labor amount. Off the top of my head, I can find it for you. It's a turnkey, so basically, they come in, they set all the furniture up, they clean, they clean up. If there are items that are damaged during shipping, they'll take those back, provide us with new ones. It's how we've purchased furniture, because we've had a lot of issues with furniture that we don't put together. That we... I'm sorry, that we put together on our own. We're missing bolt screws, different items. So, the company that provides the service through WB Mason is doing this work all the time, and they always have, so to speak, spare parts if needed. So, the service is well worth the dollar amount. It's unionized labor, prevailing wage paid to the individuals doing this work.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
So, I think I understood what you're saying. We're not moving quality stuff. We have stuff that's no longer going to be... The stuff... Yeah, the stuff that we have is in pretty rough shape. So, the only thing I'm... As I'm looking at this, it's a big number, what you just said about putting the stuff together. Yes. It's 200 and something thousand. I mean, it's 160 and 70. You know, that's... We're paying $230,000 to put together furniture in 2 schools, and I trust we are saying that it might not have worked in the past, but $230,000 to put together furniture? I mean, I know it's a lot of stuff, but I just think, you know, there has to be a better... I'm assuming you probably have looked, and it's not a better way, but that number is just so large to me. No, I understand. That is almost like we're paying... Again, it's a prevailing wage piece, so we are paying prevailing wage people to put it together. I don't have the personnel to put together furniture. It's just valuable time that I need people doing what they're hired to do. Yep, and I think that one of my suggestions, don't even know if this is possible, but when you bid, instead of going to the state bid list or whatever, we're doing probably with WB Mason, is that we do a contract and say, "We want you to purchase the stuff and give us a contract, including to put the stuff together." So, you're not paying prevailing wage for an extra person. And I don't know if that's ever happened, where we just say, you know, to see that. But $230,000, I don't think anybody would say that that's not a large number. But why can't we just do it as a bid and have somebody... It is a bid. This is a bid. It is state contract, but it's a bid. And if the items come together, not assembled, if they're assembled on our property, they need to be paid prevailing wage. We don't have a choice. So, if someone bought this furniture from another company or from WB Mason, and we hired them just to put it together, they have to pay prevailing wage. We can't get around the prevailing wage piece. Yeah, I'm just... I was referring to one person to actually sell it and put it together, like, deliver it, put together. I'm reading in here, they're going to truck it to a warehouse. I'm assuming that means our warehouse? It's not coming to our warehouse. It's going to the installer's warehouse. And they're going to bring it in by box truck? So, they are, right. So, the installer is receiving the goods, the installer is going to deliver them as they can put them together. We're talking about a lot of furniture here, so rather than clog up every room and hallways in 2501 and in Westall, they're going to bring the work that they can do on-site. I'm not sure if they're going to assemble anything at their particular site. My guess is no. It's going to be much easier to move. And if they did at their site, they wouldn't have to pay prevailing wage? They... We'd still be prevailing wage, because it's part of the contract. Got it, so it didn't matter whether it's inside or not. And I, to be totally honest, moving stuff that's not packaged is a better opportunity for damage. Yeah, I mean, we got to do what we got to do. I just wanted to raise that. Yep, I understand. That's a large number. You know, we spent $400,000 in furniture at the P Center, and I was like, "What?" So, guess there's nothing we can do. I yield.
Anything further? On the last 2 Masons, anything further? Do I have a roll called, Deb, or...
No motion.
A motion?
Approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion? Deb, would you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. All right, the next section of contracts is a continuation. The Facilities Contract for Jefferson Reely. Any discussion on that, as we're breaking it down by pieces? Mr. Dias?
Just kind of put a hold on 2 of them.
No, we're just doing the one at the top. We're trying to break them down by sections. Jefferson Reely.
Understood. I have no... A motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next section is Grant Contracts. That goes to the next page, there's one at the top of the next page, Wisconsin Center. Any holds on any of those? Mr. Dias?
Yes, just 2, Mr. Mayor. Amplify?
Okay.
And Renaissance.
Amplify and...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's under miscellaneous, so I'm just Amplify.
Just Amplify. I have a hold on Amplify. Anything else, guys?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia.
I just had a question for the Superintendent or a comment. So, when... I was talking before about the Subcommittee, so there's a lot of these that are technology-related, and we haven't had the Subcommittee meeting to go over some of these. And even when it's a continuation one, typically, what we've been... Our practice has been to go through, look at it, and then Mr. Cabral would give us data on how much usage we have, and we have this program that tells you how much usage is and all of the... I haven't had a chance to see any of that. And I don't know if there's any on here that are absolutely needed under the current grant contracts, but the ones on the miscellaneous, I do have some concerns that I would want to have forwarded to the Subcommittee. So, I don't know if you know offhand, or Mr. Almeida can tell us which ones we have to approve, but in this current group, isn't the one I'm concerned about as much as the next one.
Well, put a hold on the ones you want in the next group.
Got it.
And we'll let Mr. Almeida see what the timelines are. So, the only one on the Grant Contracts section is Amplify. Can I get a motion, a second, on the others?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes, okay. So, Mr. Dias, on Amplify.
Thank you. And just again, follow-ups from questions that I asked earlier. Just going through the contract, there's some things, it is a costly contract, I just wanna make sure, we ask these questions, so for this development, this professional development curriculum, so the 45 coaching day sessions, you said that was, how many per sessions or day sessions are going to each school?
So, in the information that we shared, we shared that Talbot, Cusson, Morton each receive one full day of coaching per month, September through May. Henry Lord, Doran, RPA, and Stone each receive a half-day of coaching per month. And that's based on the size of the schools and the number of teachers that are being coached.
And does that go into like any need base at all, or is it just?
At this, at this time, because it's really just the second year of implementation, it really is just based on the size of the school and the number of staff.
Okay. And the learning walks, they include district and the administration, are those between the company, who takes part in the learning walks?
So, there's district and school-based, and folks from Amplify who participate. And then what we do, you know, we participate in Amplify walks, and then we replicate the same kind of walk in their absence with district staff and school-based staff.
Right. I'm just trying to, because I'm assuming, is there, besides these walks, is there any communication between like your administration and Amplify throughout the year? Does any concern, like what's like, what goes into like those walks? Like what's brought up?
So, when, so they're directly related to the coaching. And so, when we, when we're, when we've identified the priority areas and the areas, you know, the areas of focus where people are being coached, we're going into classrooms and observing, I mean, really looking to see, you know, what's sticking and where do, where do teachers need more support.
Okay. Yeah, I yield for now. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on Amplify? Can I get a motion and a second on Amplify?
Motion, somebody.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll on Amplify.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. The next section is miscellaneous contracts. I know Mr. Agia had some questions. What do you got, Mr. Agia?
Core, there's two, three, there's second, third, and fourth one.
Second one, okay.
Two, three, and four. There's three of them. Alexia, Magic School.
Lexia, Magic School, got it.
And NearPod.
Which was your last one?
NearPod.
NearPod, I gotcha. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dias?
Just Renaissance.
Got it. Okay, so we have a number of holes, which is gonna leave us with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight others. Can I get a motion and a second on the others?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia?
Sorry, I just had a question on the parent square.
Which one?
The parent square. I didn't mention for a whole, but just if the superintendent can issue us a report relative to the usage of the parent square. Just curious.
Like, coming out of this meeting?
Yeah. Like to say, like, we've used it the last couple of years to see, is it beneficial, is it not? I hear that it's beneficial, but the data's gonna show us what. Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
So, the other eight, I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Agia, our core business, there's three in a row, those?
So, I'd like to make, so the part of the problem is that we don't get a chance in the subcommittee to actually vet these contracts. So, these are contracts that I believe that we agreed to, sort of in a rush, and just, I think it's because it's easier, not necessarily better. And I don't know that we're getting the best service on these issues, so I think this should go before the subcommittee of technology. So, I'd like to make a motion that we refer the core business technology and refer those to the subcommittee on technology for further debate.
Just for simplicity for me, Mr. Agia, so the three cores refer to the business, I mean, to the subcommittee. Is there any of the other ones you put a hold on, you want referred?
No, I think somebody, I think superintendent could probably answer those questions.
Okay. I have a motion to refer the three core business to the subcommittee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lauravi?
So, is there a timing issue, Madam Superintendent, with these three?
So, I was actually going to ask, because I'm not sure what the timing is on the, on these particular contracts.
Mr. Almeida?
So, the core contracts are contracts that we already have in place. The specifically, the other, the second two, not the first, the two and three. The first is the yearly contract that we have with Core for service and supplies of the copiers. We can wait till next month, we can wait till next month to talk them over in the committee.
On all three of them?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second, on referring the three core contracts. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. Next hold, Mr. Agia, Alexia?
Point information, are we going to vote to approve the others that don't have holds?
We already did.
We already did.
We just voted on them.
We took a motion to refer the three holds to subcommittee. We had a motion, a second, to approve the others.
We voted before on the other eight. Didn't we, Ms.?
We did. The first motion was, there was eight remaining after all that were pulled under the miscellaneous. So, there was a motion and?
So, now we're on the other hold, Mr. Agia had, Alexia. Mr. Agia?
I thought I held incident IQ as well, but is that a technology, Madam Superintendent? That's not the program for buildings and grounds to update the software. That's not what this is, is it?
It's not, right.
We had approved that like February or something like that.
Yeah.
This is more technology.
He's asking about incident IQ.
Strictly for technology.
Incident IQ is technology.
All right, thank you. If we already voted on that?
Yeah, we did. Mr. Agia, Alexia, please.
So, Alexia is the one we talked about earlier, and I do wanna just make a clarifying statement related to this. So, as you know, I was not, I was concerned because we spent $6,000 on Alexia Dinosaur.
Yes.
And I continue to hear that people come up for us in citizen input time and wanna be critical of, I think it's aimed at me, but maybe not, but I think it's trying to be critical of me for bringing up the idea of spending $6,000 on a costume. I wanna just be clear for the record. I do not think that we should be spending $6,000 on a costume. Now, is a costume needed to incentivize the kids and then get the encouragement and all that stuff? Sure. When we have SD Math and we have Gigi the Penguin, Gigi the Penguin costs $400 for the mascot, that's directly from SD Math, we don't need to spend $6,000. I think it's just a little over the top. Just wanna clarify what that is. We've never had a chance to talk about it, but no, this is an Alexia contract. I'm totally for a mascot, get the kids excited and have fun. I think $6,000 is excessive, and I think that's a picture of, if we don't pay attention to $6,000 there, we're not paying attention to $10,000 there, $12,000 there. That's my only point. So, Alexia I support, I think is a good program, so I'm gonna vote yes for sure, but I wanted to clarify once and for all, a mascot.
Can I get a motion, a second, then?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion?
This is for Alexia?
Yes.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, call the roll on Alexia Learning Systems.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. On the next one, Mr. Agia, was Magic School?
So, when I, you know how we talk about, we should bring all these things to the subcommittee? Magic School is one that would typically come, I believe, to this, to the Technology Committee, but I formally was on the Instructional Committee, and I've never heard this at all. So, this is listed here under continuation contracts, and when I look at the backup data, it looks like we had a pilot period of only $2,000, and now it's $31,000. So, I, this is just a technical piece of, I think this was never rightfully before a subcommittee. Not saying I'm not in favor of the program, I actually think it does some pretty interesting things that can assist us, but no way did this ever come before a subcommittee, in my opinion. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve it and vote yes, 'cause I think it's a valuable thing, but checking into the background of these would make it go to the subcommittee so we can all know exactly what it is. So, we're approving something. I happen to know what it is, but not everybody does, so a subcommittee allows us to show, here's the good things we're doing, and then we won't be spending money on things that we don't use. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Upstain.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. Next one is NearPod. Mr. Agia, please.
Just looking for an explanation of what this is.
I'm sorry, I thought that Mr. Cabral was still here. So, NearPod is software that's, it's used by teachers, and it was something that actually we first made available during school closure, and it offers an opportunity for teachers to kind of build a classroom, build activities in NearPod. It's actually something that they use to kind of supplement their design of instruction.
And if, I don't know the name of the program that has all of the software in it that we can see how much usage we have, would this pop up, or would that not fall under that?
Oh, I think it would.
If we could just get the, a printout of that, our backup before the next technology subcommittee meeting, I'm gonna ask for it, but I'm just curious how much usage we had of it, just to make sure that we're using it.
Okay.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauravi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. The next one was Mr. Dias's Renaissance.
Thank you. I wish Mr. Cabral was still here, 'cause I got a feeling he's gonna be the best person to answer these questions. In the contract, just so I have an understanding, this is basically protection for the Chromebooks we, we've ordered as a district, am I correct?
Not Renaissance, no.
Under, what's the, what is that contract then? 'Cause I, that was my understanding, that it was attached in here?
Renaissance is a?
In Board Docs.
Oh, no, it's not related to that. Renaissance is a platform that we use to, it's an assessment platform, and it's a data warehousing platform, data analysis visualization platform.
Okay. In Board Docs, I remember there was a contract regarding Chromebooks, like protection, like if they were to go lost, like tracking information. Does anyone, do you know which contract that would be? Because I believe it was under Renaissance, but they weren't labeled, so I could've got that wrong.
I'm not seeing that in any of the descriptions.
That might be a Mr. Cabral one, but he seems like he had technology issues.
Make a motion to refer this to the Technology Subcommittee?
Second.
The Renaissance contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's not a tech, it's not a technology piece. It is attached to Office of Instruction. It's really what we use, it's an assessment platform, and so we're using it across content areas, grade levels.
Motion approved. Motion is sent to the Instructional Subcommittee?
Second.
My other man?
Ms. Lauravi?
There's a timing on that one as well.
It is, the timing is not good.
There's a timing issue. So, there's a timing issue on that? Mr. Agia, we just had a subcommittee meeting last week.
On the 17th.
July 17th.
Yep.
Can you amplify the explanation on what it does, Superintendent?
Sure. So, one piece of it, the Illuminate DNA is the assessment platform. We've purchased some question banks and things like that. For the most part, when, once we transitioned away from ANET to do district benchmarking, we started building our own assessments in Illuminate. We were able to do that because of the number of release items that were available in relation to MCAS, and so we're using it to benchmark progress across content areas. And then in addition to that, we purchased EduClimber. EduClimber is a part of the platform that allows us to do some intervention tracking, build student profiles. It's really, we're building it out alongside our system for tiered systems of support across the district, and so that's something that we're doing in terms of the academic piece, and we're building it out for social emotional learning as well. We do have, you know, we've had it for a few years now, and this is a contract renewal.
Mr. Agia?
So, are we using this in summer school?
Well, we're, I don't know the extent to be, which it's being used in summer school in particular, because it's built off of class rosters. So, any teacher, or, you know, during the year, their class is rostered, they're looking at their student data in real time, they're looking at their student profiles and their intervention tracking in real time. And I do not believe that we built it out for anything in summer school, other than being able to use it to use, to access previous data to inform what's happening in summer school.
Yeah, and I think it's already happening. So, when I'm looking at the contract, it says July 1 again.
So, we got a contract extension so that we could bring it before the committee, because it wasn't brought in June. The company, I mean, it's a kind of dual responsibility here, but we've had the contract for a couple of years. We had actually done a little bit of a staggered start, because we bought something that we weren't able to access immediately, because we were just focused on some other stuff. So, the contract, pieces of the contract were, were put off, they carried it over to, they lost track of the contract renewal, and so we didn't hear from them until June saying we messed up. We only sent out renewals to people who's, who had, you know, were in year two of a three-year contract. We didn't send contract renewals out to people who were actually coming to the end of a contract. So, they sent it out to us late. It was too late for us to get on that agenda in June, and because it was a contract renewal that we were looking at, we put it on.
So, what did we pay last year?
I think it was, I think it was something similar.
And we didn't use it?
No, no, we did. I'm talking about when we, we've been using this for the past three years.
I just heard you say that we weren't using it, so that's why I was?
What happened was, when we first bought the program, we bought a couple of components of it, and it became apparent very quickly that each of the components was a very big lift. So, we suspended part of the contract to the following year. So, there's one piece of it we've been using for a year longer than the other piece, but in both cases, we're, we're at the end. So, for DNA and EduClimber.
The only thing I would say is that, I made a motion to refer this, because we're spending $400,000 on it. I don't think it's too big a deal, over three years, to actually have a subcommittee meeting and discuss it, but the July 1 date that's on the data and the information that we have, and based on your own information, was the company's lack of sending it to us. So, because they were, they didn't do their job, it's now our problem to just solve something before we actually discuss it. So, I would like to continue to make the motion to refer it. I yield.
I have a motion, a second?
Yes, I already second. I just have a comment.
Mr. Dias?
Just a respectful request going forward. If we can label the contracts in Board Docs, they were labeled zero through, we had, I think, 49, there's 49 contracts, so going through all of them and trying to decipher which one was which was a little bit of a challenge, but just going forward, if we can just put the names on the contracts, that would be very beneficial and helpful. I yield.
Okay. So, yeah, a motion, a second to refer.
Mr. Chairman? Just to reiterate, I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Dias said. I was having a hard time finding this as well, because on the agenda, it's called Renaissance, and in the actual item, it's called Illuminate Education, $148,000.
Yes.
So, I think to concur with what he's saying, it is confusing if it's not what's listed here. Like, if the top of this page said Renaissance, it would've been easier to find, that's all. I yield.
Deb, call the roll on the referral.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lauravi?
No.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
No. That ends that section. Special Ed contracts, any holds on any of those? There's one, two, three, four. Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second. Question?
Motion, second. Mr. Agia?
The last one, South Coast Educational Collaborative. Do we have a new member on that?
It's the SMEC.
Isn't that the one that, that's the one that Ms. Rodriks was?
That's another one. This is a different collaborative? Yeah.
Wait, I'm sorry.
The last item here says, South Coast Educational Collaborative.
Yeah.
Is that the same as SMEC, or am I?
No, they're two different collaboratives.
Do we have a member of ours on SMEC board currently?
I believe it was Mr. Corey, no?
It was Ms. Rodriks.
It was Ms. Rodriks, but I don't, you might have to appoint somebody. That's all.
Yeah.
I yield, thank you.
Okay. Deb, remind me to put someone on that board with Ms. Rodericks leaving. Okay, so I have a motion, a second on those four. Deb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira. Mary Coogan.
Committee of the whole, item number one, is discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Darlene Moretti, LPN District.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on Ms. Moretti? Hearing none, Deb call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Ms. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira. Mary Coogan.
Yes. Twelve point two, is discussion and vote to approve the revised English Language Assessment Specialist Job Description as referred by the Instructional Subcommittee and presented by Lisa Zagarrella. Can I get a motion and a second before we call Ms. Zagarrella down?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Zagarrella.
Have a question.
She's coming.
Mr. Corey.
I'll wait for her.
So this is a, this is a position that currently exists. It's just an, in the FREA, it's just an update to better capture what this person needs to do as part of their job responsibilities. The position is currently vacant at this time. So this doesn't affect any individual, just going forward as we hire. One of the major changes to the job description is that it does state that bilingual is preferred. We are in need of someone who is fluent in Spanish in this position. So if we are able, we would like to hire somebody who is bilingual. This is a compliance position. We must have someone screening our multilingual learners and the volume of kids coming in that require screening has increased over the years. So we definitely need a full-time position at this point.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just concerned about the trajectory in those numbers with those groups and for is English language learner, that whole group and the trajectory, is it growing? What was the percentage maybe in comparison to five years ago?
So this year, we're at close to twenty-five percent, twenty-four point six or seven. And five, five years ago, I know when I was at Durfee, which is going back a little further than that, we were under ten percent. So about ten years ago, we were under ten percent.
Yeah.
And we've steadily grown up to about tw- to, close to twenty-five percent.
Within those numbers, is there any way to collate the amount of kids that are involved in subsidized housing that might move in and then move out? How many of those numbers are movable or have those residencies been here for a number of years?
So I don't have a lot of information about whether the kids are moving in and out. We, unlike other districts, do not have like a hotel that is taking in newcomers and then that they're being placed.
Yeah.
So most of our population is not as transient as maybe other nearby districts like New Bedford, Brockton. However, we don't, I don't have the information about when kids move in and out.
I'd be curious to get some data on our student base and the, the English language learner base and just to try to figure out how, how long they live in this district so that we could properly service their needs. And, and as far as this motion, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this motion, but I would like to maybe make it mandatory that this candidate speaks Spanish, you know, some, be multilingual. I think that's like a really important piece in the connection between this specialist and the job itself.
We could certainly do that. The struggle would be if we do not have a Spanish-speaking candidate, we will need to supplement somehow with some, the kids need to be screened. So until we hire a Spanish-speaking person, if we're gonna require a Spanish-speaking person, we would need to have a way to fill that gap. It's difficult to find someone who is willing to work kind of on an ad hoc basis. We were very fortunate to have someone fill that role this year while we were waiting for the right candidate for this position. So we certainly can wait for somebody who's fluent in English and in academic Spanish.
Lisa, is this position that's, where the candidate has to be certified with a college degree?
Yes, they do. And they need to have, what we have found is they absolutely need to have classroom experience so that they can understand when they're interpreting the results of the assessment, that they can understand what type of setting would be the best fit for our students. So it absolutely does need to be someone who is certified and has classroom experience.
Thank you for that. I yield.
Anything further?
One question.
Mr. Agia.
This is the job that reports to you, but works out of the pay center, is that?
That is, yes, that is.
Is there other people that do that? I recall a conversation in the past about how we screen, is there different screenings that go on or is this the?
This is the screening, yes.
So if this person's not hired, you just have to get people from here and there or whatever?
Yeah, we tend to fill in with licensed teachers who are willing to work extra hours, which is what we do during the summer, because this is an FREA position. So we need to fill in in the summer with people who are certified and who are able to do this job.
And the only changes were stuff you're saying that just was not applicable, not that, there's not any major changes to this. So your posting was already out, I'm assuming you're?
So the posting has been out for a while and we have some, there are some changes to it. I believe in the backup, you can see the original job description versus the changes to the job description.
What is posted is my question.
I'd have to check the website to see what is currently posted. The old job description should be what is posted.
So now you just change this because we can't post the job that we didn't vote on? The description?
I'm sorry?
We can't have the job description posted?
That job description is definitely not posted, Mr. Agia.
So after today, if we vote for it, you're gonna change it to?
Yeah, so should this pass tonight, we would then post this job description tomorrow morning, hopefully.
And do you have any candidates? Did anybody ever apply?
So at, previously, this position was also, we had the person teaching at Tanzi as well. And we did not have anyone interested in teaching at Tanzi and doing this job.
Last year?
Mm-hmm.
So you, I don't wanna know the candidates, but you had nobody apply for the job all last year?
Not, so somebody took the job to teach at Tanzi and then do this job and then resigned. And then since that point, we have not had anybody else apply.
But you said it was posted the whole time and you had somebody fill it?
As far as I know, it was posted the whole time. I never, I never requested it to take it down.
Just interesting as we see vacancies, you know, here, we got a lot of vacancies. Well, trying to figure out what is the reason we have vacancies? If no one at all is applying, then maybe there's another thing that we have to tweak. So you can just get us that data. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Deb, could you call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira. Mary Coogan.
Yes. Interview twelve-three, Mr. Brian Repoza, applicant for the position of Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer for the Fall River Schools. Mr. Repoza is the superintendent of schools recommending candidate for this appointment and his position will be Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer. Mr. Repoza, do you wanna open up by telling us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
Just, by way of, just, this, the function of this position, or the way this is worked out, is that the superintendent is making this recommendation. So I think just for the edification of the public, the superintendent should first acknowledge and sort of preface the situation to say what happened so that we're not asking questions of Mr. Repoza, whatever. And then usually, typically what would be happening, we get the questions that were asked at the meeting, which we don't have. So I have a couple of questions I want, but I, I would personally like you to say why you're, you know, what happened, how did he get to this point? So that when we ask questions, it's all in context of, we can either approve and we can't unreasonably withhold it. And so I just think it would be best if you told us why is, why is he your candidate? And then we can go from there.
I would love to.
Thank you.
So Mr. Repoza was recommended to senior leadership by a representative committee as one of two finalists for the pool, from the pool of candidates. Following finalist interviews, Mr. Repoza was identified as the candidate of choice for the position. During the interview, Mr. Repoza demonstrated a deep understanding of and commitment to our community and the exceptional skills and knowledge base he brings to the work of equity-focused leadership. Our team in our district know Mr. Repoza to be a key player and leader in turnaround work in the district, specifically at CUS, Doran, LaTerno and Talbot, and also in his role as lead principal and principal mentor. Additionally, his communication skills and ability to build strong relationships have fostered community, trust and collaboration across the district and throughout our community. I respectfully ask that you support my recommendation and approve Mr. Repoza for hire as the new Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer, as it is without reservation that I recommend him for this position.
Thank you, Dr. Corey. Do you have any questions we'd like to ask Mr. Repoza? Anybody wanna make a motion, Mr. Agia?
So, thank you for being here, sir.
Of course.
So twelve point three, just for the edification of the public, it says, interview Mr. Repoza, applicant for the position. That's why I wanted to kind of preface that, how the situation goes. And naturally, I've worked with you for many years here, so I, I know what you're all about, I know what your, your skill set is, but I have just a few questions.
Absolutely.
One of the questions I think that makes sense to ask is one that I asked to superintendent candidates when they came. And it reads, and I'm reading from the phone because we didn't have a chance to get him ahead of time. "It's not a secret that Fall River has struggled with academic achievement. Overall data shows that we are barely getting back to pre-COVID achievement levels, which were not adequate to begin with. Can you explain any specific situations where you were instrumental as a leader in moving the needle to improve academic achievement?"
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, you know, I'll start at the beginning. I think that's a great question. I think that is the most important question. You know, I see this job, our, our main enterprise is teaching and learning. I've been lucky in my career to be surrounded by, you know, amazing educators. Nothing that I've been able to do, I've done, you know, on my own. And so I think really part of this work is building trust and building teams and really making sure that we're treating people as human beings and supporting them to do the toughest work that there really is. In terms of specific examples, as a classroom teacher, I was at CUS Middle School. I started in Fall River as a substitute, became a classroom teacher in special education and mathematics. I, you know, as a teacher in my own classroom, was able to really impact student achievement, particularly at the middle school level at CUS with students with disabilities and general education students. I, at the time, was one of several individuals who were hired as CUS was in Level Four status and was part of that team as that, as that building exited Level Four status. At that time, I became a math coach at Doran School and department head there. And similarly, Doran at the time was a Level Four school. I was there for three years and really my work was there to support teachers. I leaned on my experience as a classroom teacher and worked really closely with teachers in classrooms doing the work so that we saw a result, you know, in increased student achievement at Doran, and that school also exited Level Four status. I became a principal at LaTerno and it was a, you know, a very powerful transformative experience for me. I had no experience as a building principal. LaTerno, as some folks may know, was actually in the second percentile at the time. And we met with the Department of Education, it was actually LaTerno and Fonsica at the table, and trying to determine what we would do in terms of next steps for both schools. When I was placed at the principal at LaTerno, you know, the DESI really gave us an opportunity and said, we're gonna give you a year to see what we can start to, you know, what, what turnaround can sort of happen at that school. And really with the staff there, I really credit, you know, folks anywhere that I've worked for being extremely flexible, you know, jumping in on the journey. We know that the work is really hard, but I truly believe that if you can look to your left and right and know that people are there to support you, we can do anything. And so we moved that school from the second to the sixteenth percentile, you know, in, as measured by the accountability data there. And so at that point, I moved to Talbot. Talbot, as you know, is a school right now in the third percentile. We've certainly struggled with student achievement. I think that our student achievement data does not reflect right now the work that's actually happening in those classrooms. I really think that our educators at Talbot are exceptional, they're doing amazing work with our kids. And where we have seen gains right now is in our attendance data. We've seen gains in, in some of our student achievement data with certain, in certain content areas, particularly last year in our accountability data in science, we saw some, some gains there. We know that we have some continued work to do and we obviously can't understate the fact that we had a pandemic in the midst of, you know, our turnaround work at, at Talbot. So I think we're, you know, the, the team there has done some exceptional work. I think we have really strong systems in place. Our educators, as you know, you know, in Fall River, our teachers have endured quite a bit in terms of, you know, new curriculum, lots of different initiatives. And so I think about my team there, who, you know, in this past year has adopted and embraced, you know, Amplify as an English Language Arts curriculum, and before that had several different iterations of what it was that we should be doing in terms of ELA. And so I think now we have adopted this curriculum, folks have really embraced that. And our benchmark data at the site level last year in ELA, I'll use that as a specific example, showed lots of growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So I do think that we'll start to see that reflected in our student, you know, at the accountability level as well because we're trending in that, in that direction.
My other question is on the, when you look at curriculum, you just mentioned that there's a lot of curriculum all around and you had been here for a long time through various iterations, as you said, of various curriculum. Now, this position is district-wide and you're gonna have a tall task to try to get everybody on board relative to what's happening as well as, you know, working together with them. But do you have any, any thoughts on what that would look like under you as, your term as an Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum?
Yeah, so I think my, my, I've never been an Assistant Superintendent, right? And so I've been a school principal. I'm gonna lean on what I know how to do and I'm gonna lean on the people around me. So I think the first piece is, the building principal really has a lot of leverage in their building. And so I think I can be a support to building principals, I can be a thought partner, I can, I can problem solve with them. They are really the individuals that are really designing and setting the culture in their buildings and ensuring what is, you know, what is being accomplished, how their educators feel, what is happening in PLCs, what is happening in professional development. So I think that's one leverage point that I'll have. And then also with the directors, you know, at, at the building level, I mean at the district level. So I think part of what we need to do is really make sure that everyone, starting at the top, is on the same page in terms of what the expectations are with directors and what expectations are with principals. And then how are we feeding that, you know, down to teachers at the site level who are doing the front lines work? One thing, you know, one mantra for those who know me is that I, I really do think less is more as a building principal. Oftentimes, I have to find myself, you know, I'm, I'm a gatekeeper at times in terms of how many initiatives can we manage and do them well? And so I do think there is something to be said for looking at what is working, what's effective, really staying focused and committed to a handful of things, trying to do those really, really well, and then decide when it's right to sort of add something else in. So I think, you know, my first job is really to listen and really listen to understand, not listen to, to sort of rebut. And so I think I know what happens in Talbot really well. I have some general knowledge of other schools, but I'm not living in their classrooms. And so, you know, as a building principal, I like to be in classrooms, I see myself as a teacher. And so I would envision in this role, my first step is to really listen to people. Building principals, educators, see what's actually happening in classrooms, what people need and how we can make their job a little bit, you know, more doable for them. And I know one of those things will be looking at all the initiatives we have and there has to be some prioritization, right? It's just impossible to do fifteen things really well. So we need to think about what is it that we can focus on and have a great impact on, study that, implement that, and then see what we can add.
And I think you share my concern about, I think everyone shares my concern about the academic achievement, achievement levels are woefully low. And we have to do something about it. And we can't, my opinion is we can't just keep doing the same thing, spending a lot more money in a lot of different areas and the results just happen to not be there. So I for one will be looking for either bold action in some way with you and collaboration with the superintendent to say that a year from now, when we sit here, it's not gonna be saying, well, if we wait a couple more years, we're just, you know, it's starting. At some point, that the rubber has to meet the road and we have to say, no, our achievement level has to improve.
I a hundred percent agree with you and I want you to know that the work is personal to me, right? And so in any position that I've been in, I've, you know, I, I stay committed to the work, I keep the work near and dear. And so, you know, as, whether it were as a classroom teacher, as a coach, as a building principal at two different sites, the work is really important to me and I will be committed to ensuring that we're seeing the results, right? It means nothing unless we're moving students. I shared with my staff this year, you know, that, that, what drives me to do this, I live in the community, I'm invested here, I, I started as a substitute teacher. And I have two kids and I wanna make sure that I'm designing a school that I would wanna send them to, right? That, that's how important it is. And I think that we have testament to that and in the schools that I've been in, there are many cases where staff members are saying, you know what, I'm choosing to put my students in this school. And I think that really speaks to the culture and the work that's happened, you know, in those buildings.
And I would just say in closing, so what you, you said actually makes sense and it actually what you've shown over the last whatever period of time that I've been here. So I am gonna support your candidacy, but I do think it's important to know that it's important to you, it's important to everyone, but we just need to raise the achievement level. And I think you're gonna put the work in, I think you're gonna put the time in. I do think it's a challenge now at this late hour to figure out what's gonna go on in your old position, but we can't hold good people back. Now it's gonna be a challenge on the superintendent to figure out how to fill your spot in the school. So thank you for being here, sir, I appreciate your answers.
Absolutely.
Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I love you.
Great, thank you.
Good. First, thank you for all your dedication to the district to date. You have an impressive resume. Talbot's gonna miss you. I know the adults.
And I will miss Talbot.
But thank you.
But I'll still be here, I'm not, all right, okay.
But I've kind of answered some, I, I had a two-part question.
Sure.
One of them was what motivates you about becoming our Chief Academic Officer? And my second part was what do you envision will be your immediate focus? But I think you kind of answered that already with Mr. Agia's question. So what motivates you to become our, our CIO?
Yeah, so I think in short, this is, you know, an important question that I think all of us have to revisit frequently because the days get really hard and we have to remember and maybe sometimes have written it down to look at it. And so I think, you know, my why is I really believe that any student in Fall River, regardless of where they live in the city, should have equitable access to a high-quality education. They deserve it. That's just, you know, that's a right. And so I think like in any position I can be in, to continue to impact that at the building level, I've enjoyed the opportunity and I really love the work that I do as a school principal. I think this just presents as another opportunity to impact that work on a larger scale and to really work closely with principals and directors, which will in turn, you know, impact student achievement.
Thank you. I wish you luck, I am as well.
Thank you.
Would be a, I think yes. Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Nice to see you here, Mr. Repoza. I wanna wish you well. I'm gonna support your position. I just, I, I want you to know that as a school committee member and as a former Fall River educator, I'm not a fan of high-stakes testing. I never have been, I never will be. I think it puts undue pressures on the teachers and the students and their families. I've had deep discussions with our superintendent about it and she's helped me to further understand, you know, the workings of DESI. So I'm not a fan of DESI, straight up. That being said.
What a lead-in to the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about a question?
That being said, you said that the student achievement data at Talbot is not reflective of the work that is going on inside the school. And that, to me, represents the gray area, the greatness of teachers and the connection the greatness of teachers and the connection they have to their students. Because I think it still is the most noble profession in the world. I really do. A big fan, I'm a former school teacher, former school adjustment counselor, and I care deeply on the mental health and the academic wealth of our student body. And that being said, just wanted to ask your opinion, do you see any kind of forward movement on potential for the growth of Chapter 74 hands-on education in public schools?
That's a great question. I mean, what I can speak to at my current, in my current position is that, you know, we've been fortunate at Talbot to add, you know, a program at the middle school level. I know that the high school has some programs. I think that one of the things for us that has been great in terms of just vocational education has been early exposure for students. And so I think, you know, I, I don't, I can't speak to that necessarily as I don't know.
Is it something that you would advocate for once you're in this position?
For additional vocational? Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, I think it's important that we provide opportunities for students to pursue whatever may be next for them. And I think more importantly, that may spark an interest in something. There are tons of related fields. It gives students a different sort of opportunity. And so I think that's something that we can certainly look at. I know we have enjoyed the opportunity at Talbot to be able to expose students. And even this past year, we partnered with the Durfee CTE, and students actually came in and did some work in the building, which was awesome. And, you know, you know, it was impactful to almost connect the two programs in that way. So I think that's something, you know, we can certainly explore.
With the demographic that you've been serving at Talbot for this past few years, do you, do you ever get a kid coming up to you saying, boy, I really like doing something like that, building something or working with my hands or working with technology or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. We have students who, you know, we have students who ask to take part in that. We've also used it as an, as just a different outlet. So if we see something that's not working for a student, it's nice to have another option and say, hey, let's try this. So I think that's great. And I would say that our classrooms in general should really reflect, we should be, you know, thinking about what we're doing in classrooms in general, so that kids are creating, kids are thinking critically, right? Those are the skills that, that kids actually need to be successful. So I would argue that even in the context of the regular school day, there needs to be opportunities for kids to collaborate, for kids to think creatively, for kids to think critically, to defend their reasoning. Those are the sorts of things that have to happen, you know, in the context of, of the school day.
And to my colleague's point about our data being so woeful over the past several years, I've refused to believe in the woefulness of our data because I don't agree with the high-stakes nature where the data is derived from. And I think there's so much of a gray area in learning, especially scientifically speech, and when our students are so young and, and they're easily conditioned, there are so many environmental conditions that have affected it. And everybody in the auditorium understands that, you know. But so there are so many hills to climb and mountains to climb as far as DESI data is concerned. That's why I'm not a fan of it, you know, because I just want to see our students be happy learners. I want to see them feeling some, some warmth of success, you know, and something they can grasp on emotionally that helps lead them forward into greater success in their own lives. That's where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
So I just hope that in your position, and I'm going to, I totally trust in what you're going to do because I want to congratulate you mostly for your commitment to the Fall River Public Schools and your career. I think it's commendable that you're standing here in front of us now, being interviewed in a raw sense by us, you know, but you've given your career to our kids and our schools. And for that, I commend you. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I'm, thank you, Principal Reposo for coming down. I haven't had the pleasure to, I'm getting to know you yet. However, everyone I've spoken to, all they tell me is if you get this position, Talbot's going to lose. I'm a great leader. I just have a few questions.
Sure.
In your, in your opening speech, you talked about building trust. Could you just give the committee some examples of how you've built trust with your peers throughout, throughout your career and how that can like reflect with building trust with us?
Sure, yeah. I think trust takes time. I know that, you know, in order to build trust, there has to be vulnerability on both sides. I think for me, coming from the lens, I come from a lens of everyone deserves a coach. And I use the word deserves because I think we only get better through coaching. And so I think that our job is really just, wherever we are at any point in our career is to continue to grow and develop and get better. And so I think one of the ways is to make myself vulnerable, you know, as, as a, as a coach, as a principal, you know, sometimes teachers may see it as interrupting, but sometimes I like to hang, you know, go into a classroom. I may even jump into a discussion. You know, as a principal, when I was at Laterno, you know, at that particular time, I would even coach in classrooms with teachers, you know. I, I would actually teach some lessons. Not everything's going to go perfect, right? And then we have that conversation about what happened there. And then I think, you know, the most important piece in building relationships is to treat people as human beings. And so I think regardless of the position that I'm in, I approach individuals first as a fellow human being, not necessarily from a lens of being someone's supervisor. It's really important to me that I'm connecting with them on a human level. And that's, you know, that's something I would want to continue to do.
Oh, very nice. Last question for you. How important is the word transparency to you?
That's an interesting question. Important, I would say. In what, could you give me the context in terms of?
Sure. The reason I asked that, and not questioning anyone, but I always get asked, I always get comments throughout the committee, school district needs to be more transparent, transparent with the public on anything. So I just want to see how important transparency was to you.
Yeah, I think that's important. Again, I think, you know, obviously, in my lens as a building principal, you know, it really depends on the context. If it's about a student issue or an issue with a family, there may be information we can share or we can't. But I think when it comes down to, you know, programs, professional development, support for teachers, things like that, initiatives, we should be as transparent as, as possible.
Thank, thank you. I look forward to supporting your candidacy. Just a quick question for the superintendent. You mentioned there was a review committee with candidates. When did that review committee begin?
Um, let me check the date on that. The second, I believe, of July? I think it was July 2nd. It was the Tuesday, July 2nd, yes.
Perfect. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to select and approve Mr. Reposo.
I, I want to talk for a second, though.
Okay.
And I do, I will even second your motion. I just want to say, I've been in both of Mr. Reposo's schools when he was principal at Laterno and Talbot. And I always like the climate in there. I like the way things move. I look at the flow of a school when I have the opportunity to walk around with you. So I'm, I'm very confident in both you and the superintendent and the other assistant superintendents, that you're going to be a strong member of the team and, and move the district along. That's all we're looking for. What's better for the teachers, what's better for the kids, what's better for our families. And that is in a nutshell what I think you're going to do. Now that Mr. Dias has made his motion, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dias?
Just a quick clarification. This approval pending, like the, what we did for superintendent, pending the negotiation of a contract.
Okay. 12-5 is a discussion and vote to approve a proposed job description for the Director of Student Services.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Can I get a second? Any discussion? Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Just a clarification. This is a amendment to an existing job description or is this new?
It, it's, it's an amended job description.
Okay, to a position that already exists?
For the associate prin, one of the associate principal positions at Durfee.
Okay. And I just, the reason I just asked, I forgot to bring that contract in front of me. What, what was the salary range? Was it like prior? And what's the salary range now?
So the set salary range prior was in 3B, and it looks like that was 94,446 to 151,379.
And again, I just don't have that contract in front of me. What's the salary range if we approve this?
The proposed here is 95,935 to 138,176.
I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just a point of clarification. I believe this is a new position. It's budgeted in the school department, but this is a new position. Just want to clarify for the record.
Okay, yeah. So I'm not sure how it's classified. Okay.
But it's not new as far as spending. Like, we have money allotted in the budget, but it's actually a new position that's more aligned towards new type of duties that are responsible for the person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb, could I get a roll call on that, please?
Oh, so I did have a, a request. And it, we've already spoken to the FRAA about it. The, the job title that is listed in front of you is the Director of Student Services and School Culture. And we, I'd like to suggest a title change to the Director of Social Emotional Learning and so, and Support Services. And the rationale is really around the fact that the position has responsibilities with regard to students as well as staff. And the initial recommendation for the job, the job title seems very student-specific. And the, the replacement language, Director of Social Emotional Learning and Support Services, seems to encompass.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion to approve as amended. On the amendment, Deb will do that first. Can you call the roll?
Yep. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now on the job itself, can I get a motion? Oh, we already have a motion.
We have a motion.
Go ahead, Deb, please. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-6 is a discussion and vote to approve the use of Durfee High School Auditorium on November 9th.
Motion to approve.
For the Little Mermaid.
Second with a question.
And the, on the 20th for the annual Christmas concert. Mr. Agia?
The question is just on the status of the Durfee Auditorium. Is the roof ready? Is it bid out? Is it, is the place in good shape?
This is, this is for this one that we're in today, but I did check on that today. I believe Cape Way Systems won the bid on the roof. They're doing some planning. They believe that roof up there will be done in October, and they're hoping that in the same timeframe, the fire suppression will be put in. Those are two of the key pieces that get the building ready to go.
Can I just ask again for an update? Not that update, but from the school department. I've asked in the past for just periodic updates, so I don't have to ask this question every time, that's all.
We can do that, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So on, on the approval, we have a discussion, I mean, we have a vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I hope we see it all there. Discussion and vote to approve the fourth quarter budget transfer as presented by Kevin Almeida.
So this is the final transfer for the year for 2024. The largest areas for transfer were the Facilities Department and the Special Ed Department. In regards to Special Ed Department, it was to cover the prepaid sped, sped tuitions that were approved back in May. In the Facilities Department, we were able to pay for, to pay down 2501 South Main Street totaling $3.6 million. In addition, we have funds to start to purchase materials for the pay center once the roof and the fire suppression is done, totaling about $1.5 million. In addition to that, I've provided in your documents and in your backup with an explanation for all the transfers and anything over $50,000.
Any questions? Mr. Agia?
Just on that, the first one about the pay down of the South Main Street. So it says that payment totaled. So that's what we just came up with, or is that?
No, that was, we, we, we had already made the payment. So last year, we, we made a pay, initial payment on the building. This year, we made our yearly payment that we made at the beginning of the year. And in June, we contacted the RDA to find out what the payoff balance would be. And that was the payoff balance for the RDA, for, for the building.
So my only question then is, can you please tell me where the vote of the school committee was in order to do that?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell me or get me a copy of the vote of this school committee to pay down that entire amount of money at the 2501 South Main?
Well, the plan, I, the plan all along has been to try to get the building paid off this year. And it's been in my quarterly reports to you.
Can you tell me where the vote was of the school committee to fund that right now? And how much was funded in June? So like you said, we made a payment. What was the yearly payment that we had?
I don't have it right on, I don't have it right on.
A million or less?
More than a million.
So?
For the year.
You added 2 million recently to pay this off?
No, this was the full 3 million to pay it off this year.
So the other money isn't included here?
This is not to make payments in the future. This was to pay off.
Right. But this is, so the 3.6 million is new. This isn't encompassing the original payment at the start of the year.
No, it's not. It's, it's in addition.
This is new.
It's in addition.
Right. So my only concern is that we don't get the information to us so that we can make a decision as a body whether we want to pay this down or not. At the same time, as we're saying, we're going to pay down the 3.6 million, which we were under no obligation to do because we had said that it was going to be paid over several years. At the same time, as we're talking about this, I have to go around to school buildings and look at mold and HVAC systems that don't work. And at the time, we're told, superintendent's told, I was told, Mr. Dias was told when we went, and other custodians that were there, are told, it's going to cost us money to get these up to snuff and to have them 100% working, but we don't have that money. And at that time, I said, well, when is it got presented to the school committee to say, we need a million dollars to pay for this HVAC system so that it runs properly? We don't have the air conditioning going down, and therefore the buildings heat up, and then there's mold, and we got to figure it out after the fact. Where is, that's the reason why I'm saying this.
I understand, I understand.
In one lens, this makes sense. Yeah, pay down the, you know, pay it off. At the other time, you got to put yourself in my shoes as a member of the committee, and I would hope everybody else, that says, why, why don't we get a chance to decide if we wanted to pay that off this year or pay for the proper equipment to make sure that our systems work to the 21st century standards? We're told that for eight years, the air conditioners haven't worked. We're supposed to be able to tell. An alarm goes off when the building heat goes down or, or the, or the chiller goes down, or whatever the language is. We're supposed to know that. But we haven't fixed things for years upon years upon years. Superintendent was right there with us talking about this. For years, we've had the same thing. So it's frustrating when I say, oh, we don't have any money, but it's not presented to us. Then we come here and I say, oh, without a vote of the committee, we just decided to put 3.6 million towards the school. It's not your issue, Mr. Almeida. It comes from the top. You take your direction from the superintendent. I totally understand that way that goes. I much would have rather have had a decision to make when we said, hey, we're sitting on 3.6 million June 1st. Maybe a better use of this money is to expedite making sure our HVAC systems work properly so that we don't have it. Or all the things that we're spending. It just really is a, it's, it's just disheartening, I guess, is the way. I ask every, every meeting about how much we're going to have savings, how much, and now we've got 3.6 plus. We probably have $6 million in, in extra transfers that went on here. And this committee did not take a vote. And I defy anybody to tell me that where we actually took a vote to pay down that money because we didn't.
I'm, I'm just going to say that it's been communicated that it was in the documents that we've provided quarterly to you. That was, that was the plan, was to pay down the building.
Yep. And I, like I asked before.
I understand, I got you.
So the actual law reads that the way school committees are, and one of our responsibilities is budgetary, that we decide overall what the budget's going to go. You, as the CFO, superintendent as a superintendent, does not have the right to just transfer 3.6 million without coming to the school committee. I don't care what anybody says. That's not the case. And you or anybody else can't find me a vote of this committee where it was said we were going to spend $3.6 million to pay down that bill.
Understood.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Dias?
Thank you. And I have a couple of questions, but just to, to piggyback on Mr. Agia, I said he's brought up a very valid concern. I'd like to ask through you, Mr. Chair, to the Attorney Assad, if we can look into that, if we're supposed to be voting on these. I think we should, but is it a requirement that we take votes on matters like that when we're transferring that amount of money?
With respect to that, Mayor, if in fact the school committee would be looking for a legal opinion, I would be, at the vote of this school committee, I would be glad to research it and issue a written opinion.
I'd like to make a motion that we request Attorney Assad look into that matter.
Second. I don't think we need to vote for that, but.
No, I was going to say, I don't think, but that's fine.
Typically, but Mr. Dias is new, so like, I do support what he's asking.
He's got a motion, a second. Let's give him a vote. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Next question, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. So regarding, and I had a conversation with the superintendent, and I mentioned it to the committee about the bill structure. I just have a request and a few follow-up questions for the bills. When we, you send out, when your, your team sends out the bills for a school committee to sign off on, if we can have like a rationale or an explanation attached to the bill, to, to the, to the batches, that would be extremely, extremely helpful.
What specifically? Because we, you know, and I say that not to be disrespectful, but we send, we have so many bills that we pay that it would be a monstrous like task to take on. That's the one reason why I'm asking.
It would, I think it would be helpful as one member to know what I'm signing.
No, each, each bat, you know, each batch, you know, sometimes batches have up to 50 bills on a batch, and there's 50 invoices and the documents are all attached to it. So if there's anything specifically that you have a question on, we can obviously, we can definitely answer it. It's just, just to ask, just to have every bill explained, that's a task of itself.
Thank you. I, I would agree with that. The only issue is, and I've spoken to members in the past, that if, I guess it's been a practice, and I'm not sure, but I've, I've seen this firsthand myself. I've asked specific questions on one batches. Before, I got the answers from someone, your team. And I asked, when I got my answers, my questions answered, they told me, I asked if I could sign. They told me they passed it off to a, another school committee member, so I wasn't allowed. they told me they passed it off to a, um, another school committee member, so I wasn't allowed to sign. So I guess I, my question is just to get an understanding, because again, my, my first month in here.
Yeah, understood.
Like, how do bills get dispersed to the committee? Is it just sent to all six, seven of us, or, um, is it sent to a select few, um, how's that work?
It's, it's, it, the bills are sent, uh, we, we have certain members that won't sign, so, uh, we send them to everybody else, essentially.
That won't sign, I wonder the last batches, um, go out?
Last week.
Last week? There was none that went out this week?
Not, not for this week, no.
Oh, when you say last week, what day last week?
Thursday.
I believe, I would say, I believe.
It's last Thursday, okay. The issue I have with that, um, I never received the batches to be signed. I don't know if it's because I've been questioning them, or I don't know if it's, um, a mistake. But, um, I'd like to see the batches before they get signed off or approval. I think, um, we should definitely look into that matter. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Uh, Mr. Cory, then we'll go to Mr. Agia.
In, in reference to, uh, Mr. Dias's question, um, I think three years ago, there was a school committee vote to, um, lessen the amount of signees, uh, for these batches in order to expedite the payment for these batches. I think we took a school committee vote, uh, where everybody had to sign off on, from four names, I, I believe down to two, along with the central administrator. I don't remember the exact structure, but I do remember taking the vote to help try to expedite because of the, as Mr. Almeida referred, uh, there's a tremendous amount of billage, and there's a tremendous amount of, of signing. And to go through them is inordinately, it's impossible, really. So the way it's done now with DocuSign, it just helps to expedite everything and get the bills paid on time. And so I placed my trust into, uh, the central administrators, knowing that, you know, this, this, these accounts are being handled in an extremely responsible way. And then, uh, we DocuSign it with two school committee members, as well as the superintendent, and then, and the chairman, and then it's, it's done. So with, the school committee did take a vote on that, Mr. Dias, in, uh, maybe right around, uh, the COVID period. With that, I yield.
And Mr. Agia?
What's the reason why the school committee would sign?
I'm sorry?
What is the reason why school committee members have to sign?
Why they have to sign?
Yeah, like, what's, what's the rationale?
It's their responsibility to sign off on the schedules and what's being.
I couldn't hear that, can you say that again?
It's their responsibility to sign off the schedule for what's being paid.
It's the school committee's responsibility to actually sign off on it?
Yes.
So when I look at the, uh, situation, and I'm the person who told you I'm not signing ever again. So on, on the computer. Because there is no way to actually know technically what you're signing, the timing on what you're signing, and the backup documents. So I'd never told you or anybody else, don't send the, the information to me. But I did say not to do it. I won't be signing it because, at the end of the day, when I was looking at it, people are approving it within, I don't know, a minute of it coming out, two minutes of it coming out. And at that point, it becomes a foolish process of that we're signing off on something that nobody's actually taken a look at. So I hear what Mr. Dias is saying, because if he had a question, and we asked the question. Somebody gets called and says, oh, we need to sign, we need to sign like it's a big rush, and that's how it gets done. And if we went back to the data and looked at it, you're going to see that when it gets posted and when it gets signed, you probably have sometimes minutes, and it automatically gets signed. To your point, Mr. Almeida, you have 50 different things in a batch, a lot of things in a batch. There is no way in hell that any member of this committee can look up all of those items before they sign in five minutes or 10 minutes, it takes a long time. And it's been happening just boom, 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 boom. So I agree with what Mr. Dias is saying. What I can offer as a suggestion, some of the questions that I used to have was, if somebody has a, uh, for instance, a receipt from Papa Gino's because they brought, uh, vocational students, or whatever they needed, a legitimate expense, there's a sheet that they have to fill out for their supervisor to say what it was, those documents, that document isn't there, just the receipt is. So I think just trying to help would be to say, if we had, put that cover sheet, it, it'll explain, it's signed off by the head of, it, it just might explain it a little bit better. That's all I'm saying, but all I would ask going forward is that everybody gets, as a school committee member, all of the bills sent to them, and then whoever signs them, hey, sign them. Somebody wants to sign something and not look at it on this board, that's up to them to, to deal with, not for us.
You got it.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Oh, Mr. Dias?
Thank you, um, and I, thank you for educating me, Mr. Mr. Cory. And I can respect the fact that we switched from, from having everyone go into Rock Street to wet signatures, I can, I mean, not to, um, electronic signature, I have nothing against DocuSign. And I understand the urge for expediency, and I understand, um, and I respect your, um, your comments regarding trust. And I, I'm not alleging anything, I haven't seen any specific issue. It's just, um, receiving all these documents, I, you just have to ask questions, just, um, this is what my, my purview to do. Um, I just wouldn't sign anything without going through them, that, but that's just me. With that being said, the, the batches last Thursday, um, so they weren't intentionally withheld from myself. Okay, because I, I didn't receive the batches?
Yep.
So I asked, um, wanted an explanation.
So the way, the way it typically works, and I'm going to have to look into it, is we have to send it to two people. That's the way, that's, that's the way it works typically. Uh, but, um, I'll look to see what kind of permissions, if I can, if I can update those.
Thank you, and just if I can recommend, and, and that's why I emailed the committee, if I could recommend a policy change going forward, if there is a question regarding expenditure, like, for example, when I first come on, there was concerns about like the purchase of Lexi the Dinosaur. I, as one member, would like to get more questions before signing that and before it's approved. There should be a system in place, if there's a question on expenditure that needs to be signed off, there's a way that it can be held before it is signed off, approved. And nothing can really be done at that point, because it's too late, it's signed off. Um, we need to, again, balance, again, the need for expediency and getting bills signed with the, with our responsibility of fiscal management and, um, you know, fiscal management. I yield for now, thank you.
If I can just, if I can just respond.
Go ahead.
I totally agree with you. Uh, I, I, we have no issues responding to your questions, and that's totally legitimate. The pro, the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to comment and say is that I don't want to go back to the days where it was taking six to eight weeks to process bills. So whatever we can do to keep the process efficient, more questions are, are fine, I have no, we have no issues with that, and we will address whatever questions we, anybody has. Uh, but I, I do not want to go back to the days where it was taking six to eight weeks to process stuff, to be honest. And thank you.
Just one quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up, and, and I, I wasn't around for those times, and I can understand how that could be a headache for your department. But if, if there's specific questions on one or two bills, not, not hundreds, um, there should be a process, and I'm going to advocate this for this in the future, there should be a process and policy where it can be held for questions without it being approved. But I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Understood, you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion in a second on the fourth quarter budget transfer?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. Uh, 12-8 is the discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So you have your quar, your fourth, uh, quarter budget in front of you by Cost Center. We've provided all the documents that we provide on a quarterly basis, giving you an update on where we are with the budget, um, where we are with the Easter funds as of June 30th, um, where we are with insurance, which, um, at this point, with insurance, the balance is slightly under $200,000 that's left over. We've pretty much spent the full amount for this year, so we should not expect a big, uh, amount of money to come forward next year in insurance. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Mr. Cory?
Yeah, I just want to find out, Mr. Almeida, how'd we do for, uh, the for, the past school year? I think, uh, uh, July 1st started a whole new fiscal year, so how did we close out on June 30th?
You know, I, I, I understand the sentiment around the pay down of the, uh, 2501 South Main Street, but I do think that that is a great thing. I think that gives us leverage in the future, moving forward. I think the fact that we profit, we prepaid tuitions again, you know, giving us some leverage moving forward. I think, you know, from a sustainability kind of standpoint, the fact that we've been able to do those types of things the last several years, I think it's put us, you know, in a really good position moving forward.
So we closed out fiscal year 2024 in pretty good standing?
Yes.
Yeah, and as far as the payout to 2501 is concerned, uh, we voted to move into that building. We knew that moving into that building was going to incur certain costs, you know, and, and to properly furnish it and outfit it is, is, is going to be something. And, and because we're, we're working within the compliance of an expanded early childhood, uh, to help that building outfit itself properly. And so I think we're, we're moving in the right direction with all of that in place. I'm, I'm very pleased to see the growth, I'm very pleased to see Westall return to a neighborhood school so that, you know, it, it affords those parents, you know? It, it's going to save us on some transportation, it's going to be really, really good. So I think we're moving in a good direction. And to know that fiscal year 24 closed out and you're in good standing, that, to me, that's good news. With that, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Do you have a rough total of all the transfers? Like, what is the number?
For the year?
No, for the fourth quarter.
Yeah, 5.3 million.
5.3 million?
Mm-hmm.
So that just means that there was 5.3 million dollars at somewhere within the budget? That wasn't spent? Safe to say?
Through different things happening?
Variety of things, but.
All, all year round, yes.
That's basically from money that was not spent. So we have a policy quarterly of, the, the language in the policy, I believe, reads that when we knew what was the, um, amount that was going to be unspent.
It fluctuates all year, I just want to preface that.
But when we knew, the committee was going to get a bite of that apple to say what we felt that money should go for. And what I'm having a hard time with is when we have 5.3 million available to transfer in the fourth quarter, how much did, how did we not know? Well, I think I know the answer to this, but we definitely knew we were going to have a lot of money unspent in that fourth quarter.
The third, the third quarter had, you know, the second and third quarter had what the balances were at that time, projected.
Correct. So between the end of the third quarter transfer and the, this one, we spent, we had 5.3 million dollars in savings somewhere. That's where I'm trying to get at, that, at that point, when we were going through the, you know, all the meetings we had, I would have rather have had it said, we've got 5.3 million, what do you think as a committee we'd like to spend some of this stuff on? As we were going through all of these challenges and the HVAC is just an, an example of something that is, it's really bothering me that we didn't spend the money to fix those systems. So that's what I'm basically getting at. When you look at the 2501, um, payment, what we agreed to when we authorized that was, let, round numbers, 1.3 million per year for the next three years would have, had to have been paid. What we chose to do was take 3.5 million in cash, in money that we could have spent anything we wanted on currently, and said, we're going to pay that down now. Now granted, in the future, we won't have to pay the 1.3 million, but we have expenses that we didn't get a chance to decide. We had a reasonable rate as far as what the, uh, going rate was for the thing. We authorized 1.3 or 1.4 million for the next three years. We chose to print it up. So to my colleague on, on my right, I have no problem with what we did as far as opening 2501. My problem is with the financing of it. We said we were going to spend that in the next three years. Now we just took 2 million dollars or 3.7 million dollars in savings, and instead of saying we were going to fix the mold and the HVAC, we decided to pay down the debt. That's, and I don't think I'm wrong in saying that, that we.
You're right.
Basically, it's like having actual cash, and we just said we're going to spend it on that. That's the point that I, I just don't agree with. And the, the piece about the, um, signing and all that stuff, I, I firmly believe that we should be getting it all the time, the whole committee, because that gives every committee member the equal access to say, what is in the bill schedule? If the system is in place that only two people, or your, whoever's doing that, can just select two people, that's not fair to all the other members in being transparent to say, we're all seeing the bills. And that's the first I heard of that only two people get it sent to them. And I do get a lot of emails saying it's closed out. So if I get the email saying it's closed out, why not get the email at least to say, here's transparently what is in the issue?
Understood.
All right, thank you, sir, I yield.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes, um, we have, um, 13. We have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments, and regretfully, some people passed away. Can I get a motion in a second?
Uh, still moved.
Second.
Uh, Deb, can you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Cory?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mary Coogan?
Yes. Item number 14, new business. Any mis, new business to come before the committee, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, I recently was in a, in a meeting, in a hearing, where it was determined that the, um, when we meet as a subcommittee currently, if someone can't make the subcommittee meeting, if one member can't make the subcommittee meeting, there's no mechanism, or if a person had a conflict in a subcommittee, there's actually no mechanism for that person, one of us, to be able to get a substitute on the school committee. And I'd like to make that in a form of a motion, that moving forward, if any member of any subcommittee meeting cannot make a subcommittee meeting, that they're allowed to contact another member of the committee to take their place for that meeting. And what that's going to do is allow, somebody happens to be on vacation, we have emergencies, we have other things go on. But, so for instance, if I couldn't make the meeting, I could call any member of the committee and ask them, can you please sit in on that one particular committee for me? And I'd like to make that in a form of a motion so we can have continuity. And then when we have only two members at a meeting, the third member can actually get somebody to replace them.
And Mr. Agia, my own, my only question harkens back to what we were just talking about. Do you send out an email to everybody on the committee first and say, could someone make it Wednesday? Because Paul Coogan can't make it, or do you pick somebody and say, come on over?
I would like it to be just whoever they, they feel comfortable picking, because then if, obviously if I said, Mr. Cory, can you replace me? And he says no, the person who's absent. It'll just be a much more streamlined.
If the person who's going to miss it asks somebody to sub for him?
Right. If I said, Mr. Cory, can you fill in for me on the sped subcommittee meeting? I know he's been around special ed and alternative ed. If I asked him, hey, I'm going to be away with my family, can you make the meeting? And he says yes, for that one meeting, he can fill in for me. Right now, there's no mechanism for that. So if that wasn't the case, we just keep on having a difficult time getting full membership. I think it's fair.
Mr. Cory, then Mr. Dias?
Any Zoom capability for an instance like that? Zoom in? I zoom, I, I was away for one of the subcommittee meetings, and I zoomed in.
No, we can still zoom, I'm pretty sure we still can zoom, they extended it another year, so I don't know if that makes up for the.
Well, in, in May, I missed a subcommittee meeting, but I, I remember zooming in for it.
Well, I think, I think that covers it as far as I can still remember that the governor extended the ability to zoom for regular meetings, so it's got to apply to subs.
What I'm referring to is if somebody has no ability to zoom, or they have a conflict that they can't. So right now, there's no mechanism, so naturally, you'd say, first step would be, can I, can I zoom in? If somebody's either incapacitated or they're out of the, whatever, they're not able to do it, right now, there's no mechanism for it, it might never, never come to fruition. But it's also something that we should think about, that if somebody had a specific conflict, they can actually get somebody to.
It makes sense, it doesn't, it's not, Mr. Dias?
No, I was just going to say, I don't disagree, um, I think that's something that should be in the form of a, of a policy. So I had to make the motion to refer the matter to policy.
Is that legal?
Subcommittee?
We're actually voting on it now. We make a policy right now.
No, I know, yeah, but I'm just asking, uh, Attorney aside, is that's legal to sub people in?
First of all, the, uh, with respect to, uh, uh, policy, uh, I believe that the, the mayor appoints to the, uh, subcommittees.
Right.
And the only suggestion I could make is, I would make, would be that if there's someone who cannot make it and you need to appoint someone else so that they contact you as mayor, that you appoint someone.
Yeah, I really don't, that doesn't bother me. If that's what we're gonna do, I will be glad to do that. I think, I think Mr. Agia has got a good point. Let's keep the meetings going. I don't have, I don't have a problem with that responsibility, subbing people out. And do, I'll do it on a rotating basis. That's what I'd like to do. So if you made a motion that you do that, I'll support that. Well, Mr. Dias did.
I'll second that. Just the only thing about, when I'm thinking about that, is like, you might think that's fine. The next mayor may have a different, I think that should be something that should be in writing personally, but I'll support.
Yeah, no, it's a policy.
Support the motion. I'll second the motion.
All right. So we got a motion, a second. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I already did, but we don't file a policy here, so.
Go ahead.
So my, the reason why I made the motion was so that we can get out of the habit of trying to figure out, well, we gotta call the mayor to do it. Quite simply, my motion was to make sure that if a person was gone, they could say to another colleague, this is what I want to do. If you want to add to that motion, in essence, that's the mayor actually appointing that person. We can take that next step, but it shouldn't be just every single time and then to rotate it around. If somebody's out, they call somebody. That's what I made the motion at, so that we can actually, the person who's absent can actually say, Mr. Corey, can you please fill in for me? He says yes, then it would go to the mayor to say it. It doesn't have to be a convoluted process here.
So it's not the chair?
No. My original motion, which would take precedence, we're not supposed to take second motions if somebody makes a first.
Yeah, no, I, I think it got subbed out, so let's go back. Mr. Chairman? I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my second on Mr. Dias's motion. Let's stay with Mr. Agia's original motion.
Okay, but I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so I think it's a great idea that, that it comes up for discussion. I don't know that we're prepared to take a vote on it in this instance, and so I would refer it to the policy subcommittee just for a subcommittee discussion so that everybody can get acclimated to the idea. It's not a bad idea. It's a good idea. You know, it's just that there's certain ins and outs that should be discussed.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Agia?
Sure.
Okay, so you.
Motion to refer takes precedence.
Can I get a second on that one?
Second.
All right. Deb, call the roll. Mr. Agia has a motion to find substitutes for subcommittee meetings when someone's out.
Mr. Corey is referring it to the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Would it be the policy subcommittee?
Yep.
Yes.
And that's, Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Item number 15 is a request for executive session.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
You want to read the?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Assad will read the reasons first.
National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for June 10, 2024, regular school committee meeting. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for June 27, 2024, special meeting of the school committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative, including hearing, I'm sorry, including hearing grievances relative to all professional teaching employees, the former school system, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees, represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees, the former school system, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees, the former school system, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the former school system, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees, the former school system, represented by the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil, civil clerical employees of the former school system, represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all power professional employees, the former school system, represented by the Forward Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically, the new assistant superintendent, chief academic officer of the former school department to be selected, who is selected and appointed by the school committee in open session at the July 50, 2024, a regular meeting of the former school committee. Mr. Brian Repozo is the superintendent of schools, sole recommended candidate for the appointment to the position of assistant superintendent, chief academic officer for the former school department. National Law Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Brian Lally, human resources director, Kenneth Pacheco, chief operating officer. We may reconvene and there may be statements at that time. We will reconvene and there may be statements at that time.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Resus. We're back in session. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Here. Did anything further come before the committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for June 10, 2024, regular school committee meeting.
I need a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for June 27, regular, special meeting of the school committee?
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Anything further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract of the new assistant superintendent, chief academic officer, Mr. Brian Repozo, as negotiated.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dias?
I, 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 never mind. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yes.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract for Mr. Brian Lally, human resource director, as negotiated.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Deb, in discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Anything further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract for Mr. Kenneth Pacheco, chief operating officer, as negotiated.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so I just have to justify my vote and I'm gonna be voting no on this contract and I just want to state a few other reasons. So we went into executive session, we received backup information related to this contract at 10:17 PM tonight. We shouldn't have to do that and vote on issues that were not presented with. That being said, we need to vote on the issues that are before us and not whether we're friends with somebody, whether we like someone or not. And we have to look at some of the job performance and some of the things that are currently ongoing in the situation. The last meeting, Mr. Pacheco stood before us at the podium there and stated that he took the blame for the mold issues and the lack of systems working in the schools. We're currently doing an audit of several of his departments based on the prior superintendent's concern, as well as the committee at the time, for how the, how the systems are in play in those departments. I asked for a lot of backup information over the mold issue over the last month related to trying to figure out who knew what when relative to all of the mold issues. To this date, I still have not received that from Mrs. Ponce or from Dr. Curly. Mr. Pacheco walked around the Green School with Dr. Curly, myself, and Mr. Dias and indicated that he agreed that the HVAC systems have not worked for many years. I asked Dr. Curly tonight to put a pause on this, to no avail, just for a month, just so we can try to figure out any of these other issues if they were, were gonna come to fruition. I asked in the back of the table of discussion, three members voted no and they chose instead to agree to a $14,000 raise for Mr. Pacheco tonight. I simply cannot support this under the current conditions that are out there relative to some concerns that we have with it. And that's not to disparage Mr. Pacheco in any way. Mr. Pacheco is a stand-up person who stood up there and said, this is his, some, his responsibility for this. He said that in a public meeting. What I would have liked to have happened was that we take a pause on this so we can try to get to the bottom of all these issues. We sit before us and have people concerned about the maintenance in our buildings and the mold and all this stuff, meeting after meeting after meeting. And now is not the time to give a $14,000 raise to Mr. Pacheco or anybody in that maintenance department, because right now, there's a lot of questions about what happened in that department. So people can say, oh, we just wanted to do it because he does a great job and all this stuff. That's not the point. The point is, is that we have a lot of ongoing questionable things that are happening. Never mind, there's many more things that I could talk about that we should have taken a pause here, but superintendent, three members of the committee chose not to take a pause. So if I'm gonna have to vote today, I'm gonna vote no. I don't think a $14,000 raise is in order for this under the current conditions. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
I'm very proud from my yes vote on Mr. Pacheco's contract because his reputation precedes him. As far as our facilities are concerned, we're sitting in a state-of-the-art building that he oversaw process from day one until completion. And as far as our facilities are concerned, they're all in very, very good shape. Now, the mold issue is a new issue and it's being addressed. And the discovery in the additional schools is, is a result of addressing the mold issue at Letourneau. And so I'm very happy to know that it's being addressed in that, as far as our facilities are concerned, they look absolutely wonderful. And I'm very proud of the way they present to the public. I'm very proud of my yes vote. And a person in that position, we just voted for the proper salary range in today's economy. With that, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to add to Mr. Agia's sentiments, we received the rationale tonight for the salary. And when we went through it, we received it tonight,